I think we have a quorum. I think it's six o'clock. So let's put the flag up and we'll salute the colors. Hello, everyone. Please join me in pledging the allegiance to the flag. Appreciate it. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, folks, you've tuned into the December eighth public meeting of the Town of Canada with planning board. We have a quorum. I will go around and take roll call to make sure Karen Blazey.
Hold on, can we? I'm gonna mute everybody right now and then we'll do the roll call. There's some feedback coming from you.
Let me know when you're.
Chuck, would you unmute yourself, please, and then continue?
Okay, I'm here.
Feel free to continue with the roll.
Are we good to go? Okay. Once again, Karen.
You gotta unmute yourself, Karen. Everybody will have to unmute yourself when they're ready to talk.
Hi.
Hi Karen. Ryan Staychak.
I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Gary Humes.
I am present.
Bob Lacors.
I am here, Chuck.
Amanda Van Laken.
I am here.
Thank you, Amanda. And I'm Chuck Euler. I'm the chairman of the board. And we're also joined by John Robitella, our recording secretary.
I'm here.
Also on the line is Lance Brayband, representing the MRV group, the town engineers. I think we gave Kristen a layoff.
Yep.
Okay, and at the controls, Eric Cooper, our town planner. All right. For those of you who have not participated in our meetings, the procedure is is as follows. We we open a particular application. We allow the applicant to make a presentation. Upon the conclusion of his or her presentation, we then go around the board, ask if there are any questions, any concerns, any comments. We then go and open it up to the everyone who has joined us other than board members or the applicant. Once they've had their say, we then go back to the board for any follow up questions. And if the applicant would like to make any follow up comments, he or she can certainly do it at that time. We will then take a vote on the application in front of us. It usually involves a seeker application and as well as a either a site plan or subdivision approval. We do have a number of sketch plans on the agenda tonight. With sketch plans, we we listen to the presentation by the applicant. We return our comments back to the applicant, which are non binding. He or she can take those comments and do what he or she may may want to do. And then probably in anticipation of a formal application at some point in the future. What else? Oh, if you do want to speak, please get our attention somehow, either by raising your hand or waving on the screen, screen, and we will recognize you. When recognized, please give your name and address. And we, once recognized by me, you can have your say, and we ask that you do try to limit your comments to about three minutes. So that being said, if there's no other questions, we'll move ahead. There is a public hearing tonight. We have one new public hearing. The public hearing was duly advertised in the Daily Messenger. Again, I don't have that date in front of me, but John, if you have that for the record, if you want to so state, appreciate it.
December 2nd, legal notice.
Okay, December 2nd, it was advertised in the Daily Messenger. And that is for the public hearing regarding the Wifels Farm, which will be coming up shortly. I will now open up the floor to what we call privileged floor. It's for anyone who is following the meeting who would like to speak on a subject that is not on the agenda this evening. If you'd like to bring something to the board's attention, now's the time to do it. If not, we will proceed with the the applications that are before us. So anyone want to speak to the board? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to the first item on the agenda, which is the public hearing for the Wifels Farm LLC, owners of property at forty sixty Middle Cheshire Road. And they are seeking a single stage subdivision approval to subdivide one hundred and forty five acre parcel into two lots. Lot one being two acres and lot two being the remainder of one hundred and forty three acres. I will now open the public hearing and would ask for someone representing the Wifels to please speak up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
Well, hello, Terrence. How are you?
I'm doing very well. I'm here tonight representing Wifels LLC. I'm joined with the by the principals of Wifels LLC, Gary and Joan Wifels. This application is, like you said, is for one hundred and forty five acre parcel. It spans both sides of Middle Cheshire Road. The overwhelming majority of the parcels on the east side. But there is a portion on the west side of the road that includes a farmhouse. That's been in the family for years. This this farm has been in the family for four generations, hundred plus years. And it's in that transition between the third generation to the fourth generation. And so what Mr. and Mrs. Wifels would like to do is one of their daughters who's here with us tonight already owns a house on the east side of the road directly next door to the home of Gary and Joan Wifels. The home across the road, which is the one that's impacted by this current application is currently being used as the residence of their other daughter. And so what they want to do is subdivide that off so that each of their daughters have their ownership to their own homes on their own parcels. In our position to take forward the family business here. So what we're trying to do is a basic subdivision. Take off basically a two acre lot just around the home on the west side of the road where their daughter Patty Campbell and the remaining farmland would stay intact and will continue to be farmed into the next generation.
Okay, sounds fairly simple. Does the board members have any comments, concerns, questions?
Yeah, this is Gary Humes. I just want to know, is there going to be any easements required to gain access to any of the farming operations? Having to go through this this new lot one.
There will be no easements. It's a good question, Gary, and we don't anticipate that there'd ever be a need for one. There is a barn just to the north of the parcel, the residential parcel, the proposed parcel that has road access that will not need to be crossed to, you know, that residential parcel will not need to be crossed to get to that barn. So we don't anticipate the need for any easement and certainly aren't planning one with the subdivision.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, usually with subdivisions such as this, we just check to make sure that the newly created lot lines do not create any non conformities in terms of setbacks. And I can see in most cases, the twenty five foot side yard, the forty foot rear yard and well, the front yard is already have the the house is already non conforming, so there's no change in that. But as far as the new lot lines to the west, north and south, they will all be conforming. Terrence, I know this this property is subject to the PRD or PDR, excuse me. And as a result of this subdivision, does that in any way affect the PDR?
Yeah, it's a good question, Chuck. When the Wifels sold the development rights, it was only for the farming land on the east side of Middle Cheshire Road.
Okay.
This portion of the parcel which sits on the west side is not part of the PDR.
Okay. There, I noticed when I was out there, there's a fuel pump alongside the barn on the property that's in the two acres. I don't know if there's an underground tank affiliated with that or it's the frame barn that almost sits on the front yard setback sort of in the middle of the parcel. In the in the southeast corner, there's a fuel fuel pump. Is that for an underground tank or is it out of commission or?
Yeah, Mr. Wifels is telling me that there's no underground tank, never has been. It's just for show.
It's for show. Okay. Part of that farm ambiance we try to. All right. Okay, I just want to make sure we didn't have an underground tank somewhere that and I doubted it was it would be far enough away from the property. So that's good to know. You did you did designate the two acres to be to the right away line of Middle Cheshire Road, which is also a requirement of the lot size, the and to the title line or center line of the road, it's two point two nine. So I think everything's copacetic there. All right, let me go outside. Anybody, any anyone like to speak regarding this application from the general public? Okay, hearing none. Anybody else from the board?
Hi, Mr. Robinson. This is Ryan Staychak. What about driveway access and is there any issues with Middle Cheshire Road and entering and exiting off of the roadway there?
Good evening to you too, Ryan. This parcel is not going to have any change in driveway access as it's currently constituted. The barn that will remain on the farming parcel, like I said, already has its own road cut that will be on the farm parcel. And the house has its own separate driveway road cut. So we don't anticipate any change to any traffic flow patterns or any additional road cuts. Pretty much everything's staying as is, just making this separate lot so that Patty can have her own lot that she owns.
Are those driveways paved or it says stone there? And I don't know what that what that means.
It's gravel drive. All of them are gravel.
It's gravel. Does it have sufficient, I think every close to the road, I can't remember, somebody can correct me exactly how many feet or so against the road is supposed to be paved. In compliance with that?
Yeah, this is this is Lance with MRV group. Um, yeah, so any driveway that connects to a town dedicated road. The requirement is is that that portion of the driveway that resides inside of the right away or the first thirty feet is required to be of a paved surface.
Lance, is that preexisting though? Considering this is a preexisting driveway?
Most of the time where we've made that requirement, it says on new driveways. I'm trying to think if we've had a project recently where we've remade that requirement on an existing driveway. I
I don't think we have. I don't think we have. I think that that was put into effect when the standards were redrawn three years ago. And I think we've applied it only to new construction. And where an existing driveway exists, and if it should be paid or if it should happen to be gravel, then it can remain as gravel. So that would not apply in this case since it is since no new driveway is being created.
Even on a subdivision?
Especially on a subdivision. I think that you guys maybe have done it one time on a site plan where the driveway was existing, but I haven't seen you guys do it on a subdivision. Also, we did refer to Jim Fletcher for his comments because he's kind of the one that manages our highways. He had no comment on this application, otherwise impressed.
Eric, why do we and Lance, why is it just for discussion purposes? Why does the town require that that portion of the driveway is paved? I would assume for safety reasons, but why would why does the town do that?
For maintenance purposes, because everything inside of the right way, they typically own and maintain. So if the gravel driveway during winter season with the plows, the rock gets in our storm sewer system. So it becomes a maintenance issue. So paving it eases that problem.
So it doesn't have to do with egress and ingress of of the of the resident going on and off of the road. It's more of just a maintenance issue?
Correct. Driveways are already required to have a three percent over thirty feet. You know, on and off ramp, so to speak, to to give them a level area where they can have proper sight distance. So that's already that's already requiring. But this purpose strictly is mainly for the fact of maintenance concerns.
Not to prolong the discussion, but I was involved in the the change and back when the stands were changed. We also were concerned about stones and mud being drug out onto the public right away. And by having that thirty foot landing pad, so to speak, of blacktop, it prevents stone and mud from being drug onto the town road.
Okay.
Well, Chuck, I guess I just got to ask then, I mean, with the we don't necessarily have to have a resolution, part of the resolution, but would the owners object to paving that their first thirty feet of their of those driveways at some point in time, just to help help maintenance?
Yeah, it's not something we had discussed. Mr. and Mrs. Wifels thought on that?
If it's necessary.
So I don't know if you can hear the response. If necessary for the approval, they'll obviously do what they needed need to do, but it was not part of their current plan.
I think as long as we recorded in the minutes that it was discussed, I don't see a need to require it per se. It is, I know there are other driveways related to that property. I believe for the most part, they are gravel. If I'm correct, I drive by that property very often because I live out this way, but yeah, I don't think it's it's necessarily something we should require. I think we should certainly mention in our minutes and have it duly noted as such.
So just for clarification, the the principal home owned on the east side of the road by Gary and Joan Wifels, the driveways are all paved. Also, the home just to the north of them owned by their other daughter, Christine, is also paved. This older home on the on the west side of the road is the one that has the gravel drive.
I think the only reason I brought it up is because we have so many traffic issues on Middle Cheshire Road. And I think of it more of almost like a safety issue. If someone's pulling out, if the resident is pulling on out instead of their tires spinning with gravel and maybe getting some traction, being able to move on onto the highway there. I guess I would just encourage it. It's just a good idea in general. But I understand, I mean, we're not gonna I just, I guess I'd rather than just have it in the midst, maybe strongly encourage. I don't want to require it, but I think it's a good idea for the landowner to consider it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
All right, the minutes will so reflect and let's, anybody else? Karen, Bob, any questions you may have regarding the application?
No, I drive by there every day. Going home, back and forth. I reviewed it. It seemed like everything was all within code and I didn't have a problem with it at all.
Okay. Before I close the hearing, let me just go and check on the third party reviews. It was not reviewed by the county planning board because it did not require to be reviewed. There was an egg statement submitted with the application and as part is part of the record. The egg committee did review and make comments on it and they had no problems. They didn't feel it was any detriment to the agricultural community of the town. As a result, the subdivision there you see on the screen what their comments were. In big capital letters, does not cause. And I think you had the ECB comments up there and they also actually congratulated the owners on their commitment to maintain the open space, the PDR. So they did bring up this issue. Terrence, about the Finger Lakes Land Trust, I know it was sent out to them, the application. Would that any of their comments or considerations or be a consideration here? And I guess I asked that question of Eric.
I pulled up their email that they sent to us early on in the process. They're not concerned about a subdivision on that side of the road.
Okay. Again, related to the the PDR being on the east side for the most part. Okay. All right. Anybody else have anything before I close the hearing? If not, I will consider the hearing closed. We will move on to deliberations. I guess first considering a type one seeker, excuse me, unlisted seeker. So we are looking at an unlisted seeker. There's a part one, parts one, two, and three associated with this. Parts two and three were prepared by Lance. Part one was submitted by the applicant.
Do you want them bundled or do you just want them separate?
I'll tell you what, let's being it's fairly simple, let's do the seeker and the subdivision together.
Okay, want me to move that?
Please.
I will move CPN twenty dash oh seven eight. The seeker is an unlisted action as well as the get the other. And it has been reviewed by the planning board, does not have an adverse effect on the environment, as you can see. And with it, a single stage subdivision plan approval. CP CPN, you are just twenty oh seven eight.
Okay, and that is subject to five conditions. Those five conditions stand?
Yep, yep.
I guess a question, I'm questioning whether we need number five. Since since lot two would have to go through its own as stated in three and four, it has to go through its own site plan. Wouldn't the payment of fee for parkland be associated with those with that site plan approval rather than this subdivision?
In the past, I thought the board has typically suggested or made made onus to the fact that at the time of a site plan application or a building permit, that a payment and little fee would be required. We've done it on other subdivisions, so I just carried over here for your consideration, but but you are correct, Ryan. Gary, that it's typically applied to a site plan or to a as part of the site plan review.
But it also gives the applicant fair notice that they will be subject to a that fee if and when they ever develop the site. I say we leave it in just for the
Okay, I don't have objection. I just wanted to raise it.
Okay, very good. Very good. Okay, I have a motion from Karen. Did I get a second?
Seconds.
Bob's second. Thank you very much. All in favor of the two resolutions, one regarding the unlisted seeker, the other regarding a single stage subdivision for the Wifels Farm State I. Okay, very good. Thank you, Terrence. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Wifels. Have a good evening and a good holiday.
Thanks very much.
All right, we are now moving on to a site plan approval for Grove Engineering, Representative David Parsons. He's the owner of property at five forty five fifty four forty four Knot Road. And David is requesting a single stage site plan approval to construct a new single family dwelling. Mr. Grove, Bill, are you there or Mr. Parsons?
I am here, Mr. Parsons. I do not believe Bill is out of town. I do not believe he's going to be able to join us.
Okay, I'm sure you can describe what's going on.
So basically, we've submitted for construction of a new single family home. At fifty four forty four, we also, that is a development. There's four lots there. We own fifty four forty six, fifty four forty four, and then the other one acre lot there also. So we submitted for, you know, submitted our stamp drawings, our site plan, which Mr. Grove's engineered for us. We've met with Ontario County Watershed. They were out there and we did our perk test and it perked and basically that's what we're we're trying to do is construct another home there in that front lot.
Okay. Okay, board members, questions, concerns? I know you had a couple, Bob.
Yeah, just for the record, David, a couple of questions. The gravel roadway that's listed there, do you have an agreement with those other homeowners there to maintain that or how is that going to be maintained for that?
Yes, so that is a CAD and there is an agreement among the four lot owners and it is basically the agreement is is three out of the four lot owners agree to something and that is how the driveway is maintained, considering we own three out of the four lots. I have maintained maintained it for the last ten years. So, okay.
And also for the record, I just want to make it part of the record that you're in AR two with a two acre minimum lot, but has preexisting approval at one point eight acre. That's that caught me off guard until I found on from Eric that you had preexisting back in two thousand and five. Yeah. Just wanted to make sure that was on the record that you had that approval. And I had a question about your garage being in front of your house, but was corrected that we now allow that in AR two, which is great. I wish I had it when I was building. That was mainly my questions. Other than that, that was pretty clean other than that.
Yeah, I know you brought up the same issue we talked about on the last application, the requirement of the paving of the driveway off Knot Road.
Right.
Again, it's well, in this case, obviously the driveway off the private right away, I guess, is is to be gravel and certainly that's not going on to the public road. Would you consider, Mr. Parsons, at some point, paving that that opening, that throat out there at Knot Road in conformance of what we were talking about earlier?
Yeah, we actually probably will. It will actually pour it before concrete, not not pavement.
Yeah, it is, as was mentioned before, the reasons why we sort of request that become a little more substantial and being now you're going to have what will be three, three homes using that driveway?
Two.
Well, okay, but but another lot. Okay, potential lot. So being now there's two homes, all the more chances of traffic, more traffic coming out of there. So
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We we've discussed that. We're gonna, we're gonna be doing improvements all along the front of this. We're gonna be planting trees and doing stuff. And that was one of the things we we are going to do that anyway. So it's kind of a moot point because we were going to actually pay or not pave it concrete. We're into a concrete apron.
Okay, this, this, of course, as Eric said earlier, would require the approval of the highway superintendent. I don't think you'll have a problem with it, but you at least thought I checked with him before you do the work.
Sure.
All righty, any any other board members have questions, concerns?
Can you please explain the berm in the southeast corner?
More or less for privacy. That's just the neighbor. There's a home there that that's on the corner there of Knot Road and twenty one. And more or less, it's for privacy for them. We're just trying to be, they're good people. So, you know, we'll actually you know, material that we we remove when we excavate the foundation, it'll help, you know, get rid of some of that material so I don't have to to bring it off site. But more or less, we're going to berm it up a little bit. Do, you know, some fencing, do some planning on it. It's just more or less just out of respect for the neighbor.
Okay, thanks.
I guess just for for the record. We didn't get any elevation. I didn't see any elevation drawings for this, but I'm assuming that the house is within the height restrictions for for Canada. I'm not sure how tall it is.
Yeah, it's twenty twenty low twenties. I think it's it's a Yeah, it's 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 the one story. So
Oh, okay. Okay, I guess I missed that somewhere.
Twenty four and a half. Yeah.
Okay.
And your building coverage is minimal. Yeah, all the other site data zoning requirements have been met. Except for the lot size, but that was non conforming. Okay, anybody else have any things, thing to add? Just looking, I know you said Tyler had looked at the, he was there for the soil test, David?
That's correct.
So has, has Bill submitted the formal plans for the actual septic system?
I believe everything has been submitted, correct?
Okay.
What is the soil there, is it very clay or?
No, it's actually has, there's some sand in, in with it.
Oh, nice.
It may be, we're allowed to do conventional on it and there was nothing, they, they said it was actually decent soil, so.
Good.
I'd have to actually look at the notes to see what it is, but there's, there was some sand in it, so.
Okay.
And we've left, he's done some, there's two more leach lines for, you know, fifty percent future expansion. I, it's, it's not, you know, I think it's more standard that he, he put some extra room in there, but, you know, it's, we're not going to be adding on to this, so.
Okay, David, you did submit an ag data statement, which is required, you we also had comments from the ag committee, I think they were, they were benign. You had them up there before, Eric. Yep. Well, can read, yeah, I realize, board members, this just came out today, so maybe you didn't get a chance to look at the ag committee's reviews of all the applications, but I will make sure in each application, we, we spend a little bit of time at least looking at it, so you're, we're clear before we vote as to how the ag committee felt. So that's the ag committee, Jim Fletcher initially had a problem regarding the water services being separate, but then he, he came back and said, no, that's not really needed. So Jim is okay with the site plan, Cheshire Fire, no comments, and that seems to be it. So anybody else on the board have any questions to David? If not, we will move on to a type-two seeker in this case.
All right, this is Gary, I will make a resolution
Hello.
Prove a seeker type two.
Gary, hold on just one second.
Okay.
There's someone outside.
Oh, okay.
My name is John Cosgrove, my wife and I are the owners of thirty-eight oh four Route twenty-one South. And we have a couple of questions, I guess, not in disagreement with the plans, but just so we'll know who's behind us. If I, if I heard your meeting correct, it'll be four lots, there are four lots?
Yeah, there are four lots existing today, they're proposing to build one of those lots.
Okay, and the acreage or the size of the plots would be one point eight to two acres?
This one is one point eight acres. There's one larger one that still exists and one that's a little bit smaller that, again, already exists today.
Okay.
Either of those other two are proposed to be built on or not.
Okay, so, so I can visualize, we could have four houses in back of us.
Yeah, there's already one existing today.
Correct.
One on the next lot to the south that's also running along your rear lot line, and then there's two other vacant ones back there.
Okay, all right, there is a question on drainage, slope of the hill, we tend to have a little standing water during the year. Would that be a problem for your construction or would you move to mediate in some way?
Is that question for me?
Yes, anybody, I don't know.
Uh, this is, this is David Parsons, now, we won't be changing the, the water. The, we won't be diverting water, changing the water flow from the previous, how it is right now.
Okay, all right, very good. Good luck with your plans and we look forward to having you as neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye, yes.
John, I apologize for not calling on you, I'm sorry, I was moving too fast here, but hopefully.
Well, that's okay, we, we had everything on we lost battery power on our we had to resort to phone, don't worry about it.
Okay, all right, very good, thanks for joining us.
Sure.
Alrighty, I guess I should ask, does anybody else want to make a comment before we take, take a vote on the action?
I don't see anybody.
I hear something faintly.
Yeah, I think we're good.
I heard a woman's voice, is someone out there that'd like to speak?
I think that was Bob's, his little screen lit up when that came on.
Oh, Bob, your voice is changing.
Background noise, sorry.
That's all right, okay, I think we're good to go, so again, we're back to the seeker. Gary, I think you were in the process of making a motion regarding the seeker as well as the site plan approval.
That's correct, I will make a motion to approve a single-stage site plan approval. CPN two zero dash zero eight three, along with a secret resolution type-two action subject to five conditions as stated in the site plan approval resolution.
Please note, I'm sorry, this is Lance with MRB Group, there was a question that came up, I was missing a condition. I did add in that being that this is a new residential lot, where there didn't reside a pre-existing dwelling unit, we typically require that payment and little fee for parkland be assessed, so I added that condition, so the total amount of conditions are six.
All right. Okay, there are now six conditions on the site plan approval, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Point of discussion, do you think we should make a condition since Dave volunteered, Dave volunteered to do it? The improvement of the driveway entrance as he, as he so stated, make that a condition? I leave it up to the board.
I, I guess I'm wondering if, since it's not, since that work will be done in an area that's not part of this particular plot that we're talking about.
Same lot.
Is it on the same lot? I, I guess I'm, I'm just wondering if we just do it the same way we did this last one, but
Okay.
Others.
I'm fine, David said he was going to it sometime in near future, consider paving that, so that's fine, leave it to his discretion. The other thing, do we want to tie down at all the makeup of the landscape burn? I think David said that it would be planted and seeded, do we want to be more definitive as to what the landscaping would involve?
This is Bob, I don't think it's needed, he has the phosphorus information on there, so not to use phosphorus, no.
Okay, certainly not a, not a, not a requirement and it's certainly, we're, we're not dealing with anything like we deal with down on the lake.
Right.
So I, okay, again, if we leave it up to the discretion of the homeowner, the minutes will so reflect it. It's the homeowner's intent, the applicant's intent to landscape that buffer, that berm, excuse me, at some point as part of the construction of the house. And as we also said, to consider paving the entrance off of Knot Road at some time in the future. So all that being said, I guess we can take a vote, no further conditions to be added, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Okay, David, good luck out there.
Thank you so much.
Okay, back to me, all right, we're going to move on to some sketch plans. And let's go first to McMahon LaRue representing Zach Matt, Matt, Matt Tiziano, owner of property on State Route three thirty-two, requesting a sketch plan review for the construction of a proposed Zbar retail store. Is someone here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Al LaRue, McMahon LaRue Associates, how are you? Zach also is on the line, I believe.
Okay, hi, Al.
Hi, this parcel, as you well know, is, I think you've all looked at it, is fifteen point three oh nine acres. It's all part of the Centerpoint project that we've been involved with since nineteen ninety-five. The structure itself is twenty-one thousand one ninety square feet. And, and they're doing, they wanted, they're doing due diligence at this point as to before they get into heavy engineering. Just want information from the board. I have taken a look at, at all the various concerns and documentation that, that we've been given. Now, this is a PUD, was a PUD back in nineteen eighty-six. And it's, this isn't allowed use, it's commercial use in the PUD. So part of the, that's a, that's the existing conditions plan that you're looking at right there shows the topography and shows the, the wetlands and the wetlands were till any back in two thousand and five. And yeah, we know that's fifteen years ago, so it has to be reevaluated. But we also know that there's an easement across for the pipeline easement that runs across there, so this site used to contain a barn, which was the maintenance facility for the, there's the foundation for it, maintenance facility for the golf course. And, and it was accessed off of Thomas and there's our, that driveway still exists. It's on the east side of the Spruce Grove. The, the PUD stipulates setbacks and that sort of thing. And, and we understand that, we've got a copy of that PUD. And we've drawn a site plan that just utilizes the exact same entrance that's there today, and we know there's a grade there and we know there's, there's site grading that's going to need to be done. The site served with a sanitary sewer and there's water and, and whatnot, so it's, it's a really good site. We're, we're proposing to be quite a ways from the townhouses. There wasn't any requirement in the, in the PUD for screening, but we certainly know the code. And being that most of the spruces that are in that spruce stand are going to be removed because of the setback from three thirty-two, we'll need to do something just to be, you know, comply with screening of the townhouses. We did those townhouses back when they were built. So we know a lot about this site and, and and we don't think there's anything here that's, that's going to hold up Zbar from moving forward, but that's why we're here tonight.
Very good, well, we certainly encourage applicants to present sketch plans for projects such as this because especially being that it's somewhat of a sensitive area and certainly very visible. It's good to have it reviewed by agencies and comments made and you as the applicant can either take the comments and run with them or just, you know, tell us it won't work and then when you make your formal application, so reflect it. But this was sent out to a number of agencies as well. I would certainly encourage you to get their recommendations, I'm not, I'm not going to spend the evening tonight going over, you know, what the ECB had, other than in general terms, but certainly read the copy of the other minutes. I know the county planning board also made a couple of comments, they were rather rather, it weren't that many, but there were a couple of comments there. But again, for the purpose of, of this meeting tonight, I guess we're here to discuss any comments we would have regarding how you can maybe massage this, this application to make it something that we would like to see in that part of the town. I guess the first issue, Eric, is, is the, the PUD. I know in regarding the use, I know Doug has sent out an email regarding how the use, if the use applies, what would have to be done in order for this use to be put on this property, do you want to go over that for the record?
I can, I also wonder if Doug wants to go over it because he's been kind enough to join us.
Oh, okay. I will call on our town manager, Mr. French.
Hi, everybody, well, first of all, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, it's been a while since I've seen you all, so, so good to see everybody. And is, Mr. Chairman, if you'll let me indulge for a quick second, is this, is this Dr. Blazey's last planning board meeting? Perhaps this evening?
Sadly, it is.
Well, thank you for your service and thank you for everything that you've done on behalf of the town, so. So with regard to this application, you know, one of the things that I was talking with Eric about is the, the use, the commercial use, whether or not that that would be a permitted use according to the PUD, that's some of the town board is going to have to decide. So we will refer this over to the town board, I don't know that you'll have any sort of, I actually, I can pretty much assure you, you won't have a decision on that in the month of December. We're probably looking at a couple of months, I would think, of doing some research and some back and forth, and the other thing that I certainly would encourage you to look at is the uptown feasibility study that we've recently completed and see how this plan fits in with that, so. It's not a yes, it's not a no, it's, hey, this is something that's going to take a little bit of work that we're going to have to look at and see whether or not this is even a permitted use.
Okay, and I, I think that's what the applicant's looking for tonight is a roadmap as to what he'll have to go through to, to get to the point that he can make application. So duly noted, Al?
Duly noted.
Okay.
We've also reviewed that PUD and we've got a, we've got an actual copy of it in-house and so to us, it's fairly clear, but we'll wait for the town board to confirm it.
Okay, all right, let's get into the fun stuff as far as the site plan itself.
I think Ryan has a question or comment.
I was going to go right to Ryan and Ryan, you've got the floor.
Hey, thanks, so maybe piggybacking off of Doug's comments, Karen Blazey, awesome, congratulations, we, we're going to miss you so much. But let's, let's ask some questions to get on the record so that the town board can make a better decision, maybe that will help Doug. The Zbar, is it this, I'm, I'm wondering if it's the same owners as the Zbar that are currently in Canadaigua?
It is, and is Zach online?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead, chime in.
Yeah, so it is the same owners, it's a family business, I'm actually here with my brother, Mark and Ryan. So yes, it is.
So I guess the, the existing footprint in the, in the town on three thirty-two there, I guess, like, how would that fit into the uptown plan? Like, if you guys move to this location, does that open up that area down there for future development that may help us achieve the uptown plan, like, what's the vision for the whole footprint in the whole entire Canadaigua?
Well, not to speak for you, Zach, but you guys don't own those, right? You lease them from Mark Case?
That's correct, we currently lease four buildings in that plaza. Two are from Mark Case.
Okay, so that's important, so those are leased, those are leased buildings, you know, it's really kind of remarkable when you go over there, how much, how many of those buildings Zbar actually uses? You would think that's just that main building, there's actually significant infrastructure over there. So Mark, Zach, how do you, how do you think that this would fit into our uptown plan when people kind of think about Canada when they're entering, like, what are your personal opinions that we can give messages to the town board?
Sure, so we currently, like I said, we operate out of four buildings. And not only from a business standpoint, from a customer standpoint, it's a very inefficient operation to be in four buildings across the plaza. So we feel that not only will be a nice newer building, much more streamlined for the customers, a better experience for them, and then obviously a more efficient operation for us. This building for us not only is it kind of like an investment for us, but it's trying to secure our future in Canadaigua. We don't like having to re-sign leases and that kind of stuff, so we're kind of committing to Canadaigua, to the town and to the customers that we're going to be there for a very long time. So we're kind of committing to Canadagua, to the town and to the customers that we're going to be there for a very long time.
Answer your question, Ryan? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, you know, just I'm just trying to get a feel, you know, for the schedule. I mean, it seems like, you know, that's, it's it's an important area. A lot of people think that that intersection is where our town starts. They have this impression that we've heard for, I've heard for many years that jeepers, as soon as we get into the town, that's what we're welcomed by are the car lots. However, people don't recognize our town starts a mile and a half up the road, you know what I mean? And so we have that whole corridor that people travel into, and it's just something that we've talked about for a while. So, you know, to have that whole parcel, you know, it seems like the footprint right now that they're looking to develop on that footprint still leaves the northern part of that parcel undeveloped. I don't know what that does to the P U D. I don't know how that impacts it. It'd be interesting to see where that discussion goes. But it is a P U D, so I know that we have some, it's a different development, you know, that we get, that we can look at. And so maybe it adds a lot of value to uptown, maybe it doesn't, you know. I it seems like it's a a nice place for a Z bar undercoating. There's a lot of car places there, businesses in town there. People might think about cars and they go to this car area in Canadagua, you know. So I like to hear that the the business owners wants to invest in the town of Canadagua. I think that's excellent. You know, but again, this is a long process, but yeah, that's, I'm just trying to give them a, throw them a softball there to put them on the record so the town would hear that and and you know, I think he did it.
You're right, Ryan. It is the perceived gateway to the town. I think people, when they hit 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 the right around Randalls, they figure, okay, now we're we're in the, now we're in the big city. So I think it's important and I know it came up in a lot of the reviews of the sketch plan that the concerns about adequate landscaping along the frontage. The other thing, Zach, I guess, I know it came up in the your review with the Z B A. Or excuse me, I guess it was P R C, was the number of parking spaces you're proposing. It just seems like awful lot and you may be applying the our standard. You know, so many spaces per square foot of of usable area inside the building. But boy, it just, do you need all those spaces?
Yeah, great question. I actually looked at the net some more over the last couple of weeks and we currently have eighty five parking spaces that we use or have access to at the current four buildings. And depending on the season when we're busy, we use all eighty five spots. But I think it's important to note as well that this is not, this is a much longer cycle time. We don't have cars coming in and out frequently. We can have a car stay almost all the time for a full day, but oftentimes as well for overnight and then for a full week as well for a vehicle wrap. So these cars could be sitting on the lot for a week. We don't have a ton of traffic, like eighty five cars per hour per se would have.
You have a whole number of employees too, right, Zach?
That's correct. I believe we have about forty employees and to which they're all staggered based on the shift. In our company as well, the customers are staggered, they don't all come at eight o'clock, nine o'clock. We have them come at eight, nine, ten, eleven and so on.
To that point, though, you know, raises the question of, you know, stormwater impacts from from parking, which you guys do have a pond there. And also breaking it up with trees and landscaping, so it doesn't seem like a big expansive parking. It does seem like you probably have spots where you're planning to put in trees or landscaping, whatever.
That's correct.
But just keeping that in mind, which you guys clearly have.
And there's a lot of, there's a lot of property to the north of that, so we didn't think stormwater was going to be an issue. We certainly don't think that, given the area and the and the impervious, that that we're not tight at all. So, you know, that's, it didn't concern us very much at all. Landscaping in the front on on three thirty two. Well, we still want to be seen, but the building needs to be seen, but some of the cars don't need to be seen. So there's that balance where it's low enough to shield some of the cars, but not not high enough to to remove the visibility of the Z bar. So we understand that all certainly.
Hey, Chuck, I have a quick question. My question, really on this is, I don't, I don't know if you can do it, but turn it ninety degrees because there's something about going down a road and seeing just a row of garage doors on commercial uses. If you, if that can be.
We've taken, excuse me, we've taken a look at that to see if we could rotate it, but there just isn't enough room with a hundred foot setback from from three thirty two and the property line to the west. Not enough room for that.
And you're going to sit up there on the hill a little bit, right? There's a little rise there?
Yeah, that's a rise. We don't know how much, we're going to pull that rise down because we do need an entrance. You can see the topography where it comes in fairly steep and then flattens off, so we need to make some transition there. And we understand that with trucks coming in and trailers and that sort of thing. And so there there will be some, certainly some change in that topography. And the finished floor of the the building may be, may be different than what you're seeing right now at seven ninety eight. Maybe it's going to be seven seven seventy five, seven seventy, that sort of thing. And and the the dirt distributed to do a berm just to help the the townhouses. And so, et cetera, there's a, it's so big, there's so many opportunities. It's it's just wonderful to have something with that much room, actually.
Ryan, is it that driveway going to continue at one day or one time? Looks like it goes off to the right, so for a future.
Matt?
Down in bottom right hand corner, looks like it would continue for another plan, maybe? And the other question I have, Al, is there sufficient room for a fire department to come or turn around with all the cars that would maybe in there?
We'll make sure, we're forty seven feet away from the building with that drive aisle in the front of the the beige and thirty seven on the other side. We'll make sure the radii are 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 big enough and they need to be get a little bigger. We've got plenty of room to do that, not a not a concern. We'll we'll talk with the fire marshal, make sure we have that covered.
All right, that was my main concern is to look from the road and the fire trucks and landscaping.
We we might not totally screen it, but we might filter it in a way that with the landscaping that is filtered, not not totally screened, but, you know, just some some higher material that that, you know, just kind of filters a little bit, kind of just accents it. I'm a graduate forester, so I I think in those terms.
Gee, Al, then you'd hate to. Foresters here, that's amazing.
Who's the other one?
Me.
Brian.
I'm S U, S U Wanakina.
Yeah, Colorado State University.
There you go, that's the other one.
I got a question for you, you foresters. How are you going to save the the spruce trees?
I'm not going to get saved.
No, come on.
No, no, the standard's too dense. And, you know, they they won't tolerate it being opened up at all. They'll they'll get sunburned and they'll die anyway. So they they just don't have the ability to to adapt. So they'll go and then we'll do something to the west that that makes some sense and and does a little bit of screening, a little bit of hard screening in that way.
Well, that was a, that was a very big concern of the E C B was the tree stand being removed. And, you know, it's duly noted. I, you know, I I was sitting here looking, trying to move the building, move it, you know, even if we had to encroach in the front yard to save some of the trees, get it away from the townhouses. I was just, you know, looking at all options here. Obviously, if we reduce the number of parking places, parking spaces, that would help to some degree, and we do have discretion, the planning board, to reduce the number as well as I see, I think you're showing a twenty. What are your size spaces? I can't quite read what they are.
Nine by eighteen.
All right, that's where we are now. Okay, so we can't.
Yeah, we show a twenty four, twenty four foot drive aisle.
Okay, okay, you're you're.
The P U D itself is no help because it's, their stipulation was one space per square foot of of building. So that would mean we'd need twenty spaces by the P U D. So so we got to make some some reasonable, if they've got eighty five right now. I'm torn.
What about putting them on one side of the building or not? I mean, like, can we, I mean, and what about the, can we offer any relief of the setbacks with the P U D and something to maybe utilize that that space better? Do we have to follow the hundred foot setbacks, Eric?
We do for the P U D because that's stipulated in the P U D. So you'd have to change the P U D and that's a, that's a monumental task. It's not like a go into the zoning board of appeals for a variance.
It just seems like a hundred feet of that prime real estate is gosh, it'd be nice to utilize that a little better somehow, you know?
I hear you, I hear you, but there's no way to, there's no way to accomplish that easily, that's for sure in the timeframe that Zach wants to move on this.
Eric, doesn't the uptown study encourage moving the buildings closer to the highway? And and then and then providing parking to the rear where it's not visual from the road? Now, if we're going to try to somehow apply the uptown concept, and this is, this would be a good place to start to apply it. You know, that could be a possibility, but as Al said, it's in a P U D and it would take an active of the town board to, I guess, change that.
The other dynamic about that is we have a, we have a automobile circulation around the building right now at this point. And so there's, there's an opportunity for drive through from one, one side, east side, out to the west side or vice versa. And and then continuing on their way without impeding anything. So that that whole circulation seems to work really, really well from a, from a business standpoint, Z guard standpoint.
Al, are you drawing the setback required to the parking area?
No.
Instead of like the building?
I've got the hundred foot setback to the no, I've got it to the parking area, but actually the parking area, I've got it a hundred and fourteen, almost a hundred and fifteen feet back. They don't stipulate in the in the P U D. Let me just look real quick while you're having a discussion.
I don't know that it'll specify in the P U D, but our town code does say that setbacks are drawn from the building line. So it wouldn't be drawn from the parking area, which might provide you a little bit more flexibility.
Let me just take a quick look. You guys can talk about some other things while I'm taking a look at this P U D.
No, I think I'm looking, any input from board members, please?
Yeah, I guess I've got a, I've got a question and it's kind of just more around the the process, I guess, and and any residual effects of that. Are there, are there any types of, you know, highly flammable, toxic materials, residual materials, things like that that we'd have to account for in terms of any, any types of special fire retardant sprinklers or anything else that would have to go on in that site? Can you explain that from the, of the materials that are being used and how they're disposed of and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, so I don't have the S D S with me, but I can provide those for you. I just went through this actually with Chris Roth from Brighton. And he did a full review of our location in Brighton, New York. And he, after a long series of conversations, he decided that we are not required per New York State Fire Code to have a sprinkler system. So I guess that was good news for us. And I guess that he mentioned that we would not be grandfathered in. So he could have, if required by the S D S, he could have forced it upon us, but he said it was not required. So but I'd be happy to provide those for you. We also use Cristo Clean to dispose of all of our chemicals when necessary. We have very accurate records of that process and they clean out our oil water separator on a regular basis, typically three times a year.
Anything else, Karen?
I got an answer for you on the the terms and conditions of the approval back in nineteen eighty six. Right away in setback C, number two, A, it stipulates from three thirty two, a hundred feet from the expanded ninety nine foot right away line, no structures or parking shall be placed within the setback area and provisions shall be made in the site plans for landscaping of the setback area. This setback is a specific variance from the three thirty two corridor plan is granted because there will be no frontage road developed, no individual access from three thirty two except via the internal road. And the site plan provides for the reverse frontage road concept. That that's stipulated in the in the P U D. So no, we can't, we can move it fourteen feet, but I don't see the, I don't see the, there it is, you're getting it.
So you're you're reading from a document that's thirty four years old.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But it is the document.
It is the document. But my suggestion, my suggestion to you, Al and Zach, since you got to spend the time and effort in getting a clarification on the the use, maybe at the same time, you could consider a waiver or some sort of relief on parking setbacks. Being that we now have this new creation of the uptown concept and that sort of, I won't say it circumvents the P U D, but it certainly should be something that should be considered when you're looking at a document that's now thirty four years old. And things have changed and maybe that's something you can look at as you go before the board, the town board. And that would be my suggestion to you as you go through that effort to not only look for clarification on the use, but also look for some relief on the development standards.
We can make application for the clarification of the use.
It's almost like you'd sit down and sort of, you know, draw your ideal. If you had, if you didn't have the restrictions you have with the P U D, how how would that site look? And sort of lay that out. I mean, you know, we could certainly give you some some relief on the parking when you, when you make your site plan approval, assuming you have the approval from town board in the, in the clarification from them. But now, you know, being again, this is a sketch plan. It's it's good. We we sat to bits tonight and talked about it. Hopefully, we're giving a little bit of guidance. Certainly would, you know, welcome a development on that particular property, but we want to make sure it's done right. And I think these are some of the issues that have come up. But also, if you haven't already looked, refer you to New York State Department Transportation. I think there was a comment about the driveway. And you're also within that right away that sort of wraps around Thomas Road there. So make sure that you can make them happy also.
No, we know that.
Okay.
They have that appropriation that cuts around and and that's under their purview.
And I, again, I would refer you to the minutes of the E C B. Canada Fire Department did respond and their concern had to do with the driveway. Also look at the county planning board's comments. So sort of take, you know, what we talked about tonight, along with those, those comments from the reviewing agencies and I guess go back and sort of go back to the drawing board and we're sitting there looking forward to their application at some point in the future.
Great, I'm all set. Are you all set, Zach?
Yes, I am. Thanks so much.
Okay.
Can we, I know we're not required to take public comment, but do you want to if there is anything out there?
Sure, we can open it up.
I I see that there's a lot of people who joined us tonight.
Okay, we're, again, we're talking about the Z bar sketch plan. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, we're, again, we're talking about the Z-E-W-A-R sketch plan. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Now would be the time to do so.
If you know how to, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, makes it easier to. Nobody?
See none? Okay. Well, then they're all here for the Romanian applications. All right, Zach, Al, thank you for your time. Hopefully it was helpful.
Thank you very much.
It was. Thank you.
All right, continuing on our review of sketch plans this evening, uh, we will now shine a little sunlight on the deliberations and go to Wildcat Renewables, representing one, the Pollicini owner of property at fifty-five seventy-five State Route five and twenty. And they're showing us a sketch plan for a solar project. Is someone here from Wildcat?
Uh, yes.
Looks like Brian Madigan. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening. Thank you, uh, for, for the opportunity to, uh, speak with you all tonight. My name's Brian Madigan. I'm a project manager with Renewable Properties. And, uh, I'll start with a little overview on renewable properties and then talk specifically just for a minute or two about the, the project. So we are a, uh, a small company headquartered in San Francisco, though we are, are currently all kind of working remote here. Uh, I actually am in Maine at the moment. We, uh, we are about nineteen employees and, uh, we develop, finance, own and operate small-scale, uh, community solar projects across the US. We're currently active in California, uh, New York, South Carolina, North Carolina and Minnesota, um, with, uh, operating projects both in Minnesota and California. So, uh, we, uh, well, I guess I'll, I'll leave it there for, for Renewable Properties. So we are developing the, uh, the Buffalo Road Solar Project and, uh, this is, um, a three and a half megawatt project. We are proposing a site plan and subdivision of, uh, to facilitate, um, the, the project going through the process. We have interconnection, we have an interconnection, um, study and process and, uh, have completed the, uh, Caesar Review in November. So, uh, the opportunity is viable from, uh, that perspective. The project would interconnect with an existing distribution line, uh, with Rochester Gas and Electric along Buffalo Road. And, uh, once operational, the, uh, the project would provide, uh, renewable energy for approximately eight hundred and sixty-six homes, uh, in the RG&E territory. So, uh, so with that, I guess I'll open it up for questions or if Dave, Dave Plant is here as well. He's, uh, our, our consultant from Bergman who's, uh, helping us navigate the, the towns process.
Brian, what might these, um, solar panels look like?
Uh, that's a hard one to, uh, explain.
I mean, we're talking about a lake, you know, sort of near the lake property here.
Um, sure, I could, uh, uh, I could provide you guys with an example of what, uh, what a solar, you know, it's basically, um, I don't, I don't know.
We've seen them. Are they like that?
Are the details for this one similar to the one over on County Road ten?
Thank you. Yeah.
Because I, I have the specs forever for the County Road ten one and I'm not sure if these are the same.
Trackers, right, Brian?
Tracker system, yes. I'm not sure what they're proposing, but it's, it's probably pretty similar. Yep.
We've seen those, yes, yes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, is this?
My colleague Peter is, oh, sorry.
Oh, go, go ahead, go ahead. We're, we're on the spec sheet, yep.
Okay, my, uh, my colleague Peter is sharing, uh, something in the Zoom chat, um, which is a photo of our existing, uh, American Canyon project in California.
Is that, is that the detail we're looking at now or?
No, I'm pulling it up right now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You're going into the chat? Okay, there it is. Yep.
So this, this project is, uh, one of our, our earlier projects. It was, uh, completed construction last year and, um, is currently operational. It's in, uh, the city of American Canyon in Napa County.
Looks like it's solar field.
Eric, can you please explain the process?
Well, right now they're, uh, just applying for sketch plans, so it's just to receive comments and everything. Uh, but the process is that they would make application for, uh, special use permit for a large scale. How do we call it? A large-scale solar special use, um, and site plan approval at the same time. Um, very similar to how we handle the sketch plan. We refer it out to the various committees and agencies that need to see it, County Planning Board, uh, the Ag Committee, the ECB, uh, anybody that might, um, be a stakeholder involved here. Uh, we would, uh, provide five hundred-foot notices to, uh, neighboring property owners. And, um, then it would come before the board. Uh, the board would have to make a decision on seeker. And assuming, or if they did, that there was no impact or however the process ended up playing out, uh, then they could, um, approve the special use and site plan. There are, in that special use permit, a number of requirements that would have to be met. Uh, one of which is a decommissioning plan, which would be for a number of years down the road for when it's, uh, no longer usable. There's, uh, landscaping plans required, a maintenance plan for the field. All sorts of requirements in that chapter, which I believe is two twenty seventy-seven.
And Brian, have you read, have you read through that part of our code? Brian?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we have.
Okay. So, yep, we will strictly hold you to the requirements, uh, of, uh, that code, uh, we have in the past and we will continue to do, do so. Eric, there's a reference, there's a reference to a subdivision here. Does this involve a subdivision in any way? Is, is, is a piece of land?
Yes, I apologize. I, I forgot to mention that, but it could be handled at the exact same time as the site plan. There's really no reason why, why that couldn't be done at the same time, but there is, um, a shown subdivision. The proposed lot line is a little tough to see, but it would be this kind of line running here and around the DC wetland, connecting there.
Okay.
I, I, this is Garrett. I'd like to make, um, just a couple of comments. Um, one in particular to this specific, um, plan here, and I guess the other, my second comment that I'll make really can, can relate to both this one as well as the next one we're going to review because it's kind of solar farms in general. Um, but specific to this one, um, we talked about in the last application for the Z-E-W-A-R, you know, being, uh, that location kind of being the gateway, at least from the north into Cana-, the town of Canadagua. Um, this in particular is, is the gateway from the west into the town of Canadagua. Um, there's a lot of farmland around there. Um, this does have a lot of farmland associated with it right now. And, um, quite honestly, I, I, I do not see this as a, as a suitable use for this particular parcel. Um, I think when you're coming into the town of Canadagua, you know, the last thing we want to see is a whole bunch, is a, a solar farm right there just before we get to our town hall and, and surrounded by other, you know, beautiful agricultural community. And I, I, I don't think that this sets in with the, you know, the setting that we want to make for the town and for people that enter into this town. So I don't think it's a good site for a solar farm. Um, and, and, and I'd have to be, uh, you know, convinced pretty strongly otherwise, um, if you want my support for this. Now, going to that, and the, and the second, second thing is to, to get my support, um, I'm, I'm beginning to wonder a little bit about solar farms in general and the benefit that they're going to have to the community. Um, you talked here, you said this would, well, up and operational will be about eight hundred and sixty-six homes that it could provide, you know, energy for. But I'm just not sure how that business model really does benefit the consumer. Um, I, I can see how the business model and the, and the financial model, model certainly benefits the, the land owner. Um, he leases his land and he'll get some, some, something from that. He might even get, you know, energy uh, from that and, and whatever relationship you have. Um, the, the owner of the solar farm certainly has some benefit from that. They can sell their energy to, to RG&E and, and whoever else. Um, but I'm not convinced yet um, that the consumer and the regular town, the town of Canadagua in and of itself receives any benefit from these solar farms. Um, since I've been on the board, I think we've approved two solar farms, uh, one of which is up and operational. And, uh, before I was on the board, I guess the, the big one out on Route ten was, was approved and, and has been installed. Um, but personally, so we've got three solar farms, large solar farms in the town of Canadagua at least that I know of, maybe there's more. But I certainly haven't seen my utility bills lowered a- anytime soon be as a result of that.
I, I'm thinking that we approved.
I don't, I don't know how, you know, how that, how, how many solar farms do we need bef-, before we all of a sudden can, can reap the benefits? The consumer, the town of Canadagua can reap, reap some benefits from, uh, from having these, what, you know, appear to be kind of some unsightly type of, uh, construction. So
Gary.
I have some suspicion. So those, those are my comments. I'm gonna let people respond to that and I'll, I'll listen.
I'll just say that we, the town of Canadagua has passed a special use permit to allow for large-scale solar energy systems. I'm not sure how much consideration of the business model is allowed to go into this. We have standards set forth of, you know, approving a special use permit for this. I think that considerations of it are at least maybe more appropriate left to the standards of the special use permit between this section that I have up on the screen and the more general section, two twenty thirty-five, I think it is. I would, I'm not sure how, how much we can get into the business model itself, but I think it's a fair point to say, you know, maybe we could use some more education on it and, and get a better idea of how it functions on it.
I remember when we approved the solar farm on Route ten. And my understanding with the solar farms is it's not a, a business model. I mean, it is, but the deeper concern is an environmental model, uh, much like, like, uh, a car that, you know, doesn't use gasoline anymore. And I think the benefit, at least at the time, we were pretty convinced the benefit would be to our environment, not using those resources.
It, and I would say the ones on County Road ten or forty-seven, County Road ten, they, they do go to our community or at least to the city of Canadagua. Those are put up so that essentially the energy or the credits for the energy could be used for the city of Canadagua buildings. Uh, the one on Monks Road, I'm not, I'm less sure.
Hey, Gary, uh, this bomb, um, I, I totally agree with, with what you said. I, you said it very well and I agree that, uh, I don't think it's the place for it. So thanks.
Well, and to add, uh, and fuel to that, uh, one of the criteria that we, we look at in our, uh, review of the special use permit is the, uh, the value of the land, the farmland upon which the facility is going to be built. Uh, if it is found to be prime or, uh, uh, good farmland that could be sustained as, as farmland, uh, a solar farm would probably not be an option or shouldn't be an option, uh, as a way to, to make some use of that land. And, uh, I patiently waited for the Ag Committee's review of this particular application. And Eric, if, uh, you have a chance and you can put it up, you'll, you'll note that the Ag Committee definitely feels that, uh, this is prime land, farmland. And, uh, they would not recommend that the, uh, facility or the alternative of a, uh, solar array be installed here. So it would, it would cause a loss of agricultural land and that's something I think we as a board have to look at very carefully because in the other situations, uh, the other applications, uh, the other projects we looked at, I think the farmland, uh, was not as prime as, as it is in this case. And it was felt that the solar array was certainly a, an alternative, uh, uh, to, uh, using the land in lieu of, uh, continuing to farm it. So I think that, that's a big hurdle on this particular property.
Can I ask if, if the land is being farmed now and what, and what, uh, what qualifies it as valuable farmland?
Well, I think. Go ahead, Eric. While you're pulling it up, I, I think it's obviously got some forestation on it, uh, some trees, which was an issue, a concern of the ECB. Uh, that a portion of that, there's a, that forest would be removed.
Well, soil would certainly be a, a big factor in prime farmland. I mean, that's the way they, they rate it.
So it's being haved. So, um, well, I guess I'll take the floor for a little bit and respectfully disagree with the, the, the the notion, um, of solar. Uh, for over a hundred years, we've been powering our cities and towns and villages with, uh, non-renewable resources of coal um, and polluting our air and, and water resources for, uh, decades and decades. That has caused, uh, an excessive amount of carbon to go into our atmosphere that is, uh, undisputably, uh, being, that's causing, uh, a, a general warming temperature of our earth. And I wholeheartedly support renewable energy. It's, uh, in twenty-five years, it can go back to agricultural land. We've had these discussions before. The value of solar and wind and renewable resources is the future. Uh, of a sus-, of a sustainable model for communities. So I, I support the notion of them, but I think the bigger issue here is that we have, uh, a parcel and I agree with the welcoming into the towns. Our gateways, I mean, Doug could even certainly, um, for years I've been trying to encourage an open space program that purchases our, uh, open lands and our gateways and welcomes people to our community. Uh, but if we don't own the land, uh, and if somebody has a right and they have a special use, uh, an option to use that land, we, I, I think, I can't, I don't think we could just say they can't do something because we don't like what it looks like. I think they have a right to use their private property for that land. I could be wrong, but it'd be nice to have Chris on this conversation. Um, so I think the, 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 maybe the, the benefits to each person in our community may be not be tangible, but certainly to future generations they may be. But if we, if, if, if that land is so valuable, then we need to get in the game and either purchase it with our town tax dollars or something. So I don't know how we continue to move on to this project or like the conversation, but I kind, this is a conversation we had with the, uh, County Road ten. We had the same conversation on Seneca Point Road or I mean on, uh, Monks, Monks Road, was it?
Yeah, Monks.
You know, and the, the private landowner has a right to, to utilize their property. We can certainly encourage them to do screening, setbacks, all of the things that are within the large-scale solar policy that we adopted a couple of years ago, but I don't know, I mean, Eric, can make me, correct me if I'm wrong. You can't just tell the person they can't do this. Is that correct?
Um, so a special use permit, essentially you lay out conditions that are put here in the, in the, in this chapter, that if they can meet and comply with these conditions, then my understanding, of course, Chris now there could. then my understanding, of course, Chris Nader could correct me if I'm wrong, but you can't really, if you, if they satisfy those conditions. There are some things in here that are probably a little bit more subjective that the board has to make a reasonable determination on. But generally, if, if they can meet those conditions of the special use permit, then that use is allowed to them.
Eric, you wanna scroll to that section that, uh, relates to the prime farmland?
Ryan, by the way, you said very eloquently what I was trying to say. We, we went through that whole process when we did County Road ten. I remember talking about the animals and what we were gonna do with them. I mean, we went through every little thing we could, but solar energy is something that is an environmental plus, which that's what our area is about. The lake is not doing well, needs, needs some help.
Chairman, can I make a, this is Dave Plant from Bergman, uh, with the application or the applicant team. Just wanna add, um, to what, um, Ryan said about, um, we are gonna have a decommissioning plan that's going to be submitted with the full application that's going to outline how the project, uh, will be removed when the, um, useful life of the project is over with so that the property can be returned to active agriculture, uh, to the standards of New York State Department of Ag and Markets. Um, so that will all be submitted as part of the, the main submission to the planning board. And then I'd, I'd like to also add that in this area at the gateway of Canadegwa, I, I live in Farmington and my kids go to Canadegwa, um, there are a number, you know, Overlook Drive, Town Hall, the transfer station, all of these are on prime farmland soils. And I wanna make sure that, you know, that was considered when those projects were approved or reviewed, um, equally to how it's being considered with this project here.
Yep.
It, it was, Dave. Uh, yeah, uh, Eric put up the, uh, reference to the, "The planning board shall determine that the use of the land required shall not cause a loss of valuable agricultural lands to the town of Canadegwa." Somewhat subjective, no, no doubt about it, uh, but it's certainly something that, uh, has to be part of our considerations. And, and I rely on the ag committee and people who, uh, know which end of a horse to ride, uh, more than I do, uh, to be able to determine, make those determinations. But it's, it's something, you know, again, sketch plan, we're, we're talking about, you know, not hurdles, but issues you have to look at. And again, as I said before, this is certainly a good venue to sit and talk these things out so you're aware of, of our concerns and you can certainly consider those in your, uh, your application.
Um, Mr. Chairman, this is Lance with MRB Group. If I could, um, I just, I think it's a good opportunity to just kind of reiterate some of the requirements that are in your special use permit. I know that we hashed them out earlier. Um, I just wanna make, make it clear that, um, a couple of items that we would be looking for is obviously proof of feasibility from the provider. I think that's important to be provided as part of the initial application that justifies that you have an approvable connection point. Um, your site-specific O and M plan, your operation and maintenance plan that you guys referenced, um, how this site is going to be maintained throughout the life of the project. I think it's important that we don't get a template to how you do things other places. I think it's important to get something that's very specific to how you're going to maintain and operate this site. Um, your decommissioning plan, um, obviously follow the protocols and requirements associated with the town's local law, but I would encourage that as much detail as possible in schedule as how this thing's going to be decommissioned as if somebody else was doing it. Uh, I want it, uh, uh, we look for a step-by-step process. Um, and, and likewise, your decommissioning estimate is to be detailed and itemized. Um, the town does not allow scrap metal to be included in that estimate, so that estimate should not include scrap metal costs. Um, and as part of the process and as part of the consideration, I would encourage a larger setback from your neighboring properties. I, I see that you're showing thirty feet and I don't believe, I don't know what the requirement is off the top of my head, but I would, I would encourage a larger setback where feasible. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Lance.
Doug, you wanna add something?
Mr. Chairman, if I just could though, I think it's also, um, you, you have the, uh, guidelines there or the, actually they're not guidelines, the, the town code for the special use permit. And obviously we spent a considerable amount of time when we actually adopted that local law and specifically the planning board is, uh, not allowed to issue a special use permit unless all those things, including the loss of, um, that, that there shall not cause a loss of valuable agricultural lands to the town of Canadegwa. But I think it's also important to note, and sometimes I think this gets missed, um, in terms of the applicant, please be aware the town of Canadegwa is not, does not provide taxable exemptions for solar. Uh, the town of Canadegwa opted out of that, uh, back in the nineties. Uh, we've been asked many, many, many times to, uh, opt back in, the answer is no. Uh, so, uh, a lot of times I've, I've seen it where somebody's gone through the process of trying to get the application or they even get approval and then they come to us and ask for that exemption. So, um, if we did it for you guys, we'd have to do it for everybody else that asked. So just so you're aware.
And what about pilots? I know that that question comes up from time to time.
Yeah, it does come up and obviously everything would have to be entertained, uh, or, uh, considered on a case-by-case basis, however, it's the same answer. Uh, no. Sure, we'll go through the hoops with you, but it's always been no, so.
Eric, I'm sorry, I'm sorry Chuck, this is Ryan.
No, go ahead, Ryan.
Eric, on Doug's comment, how did we approve that solar project on, uh, Monks Road that, uh, took up twenty acres of his farmland? If we're not allowed to do that?
Right, let me just jump in there for a quick second. So I was with the agriculture committee when we reviewed that and our agriculture committee, please know there's seven members, they come from a variety of different agricultural perspectives. The agricultural committee for that particular project actually recommended that you do do it. And the reason is because there was all kinds of erosion and all kinds of problems with the farmland and it wasn't actually viable farmland for farming purposes. So they actually recommended for the Monks Road parcel that you actually do do the solar project.
I remember that they had like value sheets for like how much crops were like produced on it and whatnot, and essentially they made the determination that it wasn't really valuable land for that portion of it.
And did they do that, the same thing for the hayfield that we're looking at now?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Well, they, they provided, I believe they provided the soil data. It is in prime, classified prime farmland that the other, uh, parcel was not. Uh, so it, it, there's a lot of different things. There's rankings for every single parcel in the town of Canadegwa in our agriculture plans, so they provided you some of that detail. And they went through that in their analysis in detail determining if it was, in their opinion, viable agricultural land or not, and they believe that it is.
Okay, thanks, though. Uh, anyone else from the board have any, uh, comments to pass on to the applicant regarding this application? Again, somewhat related to the, uh, the, you know, what we were talking about regarding the entrance to the town and the, uh, the look from, uh, five and twenty, uh, boy, there's a, as, as shown on the sketch plan, the arrays are awfully close to, uh, to five and twenty. I think a, a greater setback, a greater buffer would be certainly, uh, applicable in this case and it would certainly help soften, uh, uh, what we were talking about earlier regarding, uh, what the, uh, look would be as you, uh, as you drove by it. So that's one other suggestion. All right, anybody else have any other comments?
I guess I have one last question for Doug. Doug, when, when Kevin O'Veany came to the same parcel for the, uh, the spillway that we're looking at right now, did the agricultural committee also consider that development with prime soils? Like, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be fair to the whole parcel here and just try to be consistent.
I don't know that we had.
Well, so the, the, so the, well, two things. So when we, prior to the solar law, large-scale solar was not permitted in the town of Canadegwa. Let's just be, call it what it was. I mean, we had cases where they previously came to us in two thousand fourteen and fifteen. I had cases that I, that I interacted with myself and the answer was no, they were not permitted in the town of Canadegwa. Once we did the solar law that allowed these large-scale institute, uh, facilities, um, we did that with the caveat that there would not be a loss of valuable agricultural land and that was number one on purpose, uh, in those, in those listings and everything. Um, this parcel, uh, is a unique parcel, certainly, and the landowner, let's be very clear, the landowner, uh, worked very closely with us in terms of, uh, and the DEC and the Canadegwa Lake Watershed Council in terms of what that meant for Sucker Brook. But the back of that parcel was very wet where that stormwater, uh, water quality improvement project was done with, uh, Sucker Brook. And so there was some grading that we did, we did some grading, we did some berming. I think probably it might help a little bit, uh, because the, there was some drainage issues and everything, and I think maybe it's helped the, the parcel overall when you're looking at that. But, uh, and then the, the neighboring property also worked very closely with us because the backs of their property were also flooded. So that was a joint project, uh, obviously the city, the town, the Canadegwa Lake Watershed Council and the DEC and obviously the landowner. The landowner was, uh, great to work with us and then we're able to, uh, design that so that that during those high flows, the water holds in that water quality improvement project and then goes out through a weir structure back to Sucker Brook. Um, so little, uh, I think a little bit different situation to, to answer your question, Ryan. It wasn't really quote-unquote, "the loss of farmland" there per se.
Okay, I'm, uh, I wanna keep, keep things moving here. Uh, anybody else have any comments to offer to the applicant regarding the sketch plan?
Are we opening up to the public if the public wishes to comment?
Um, thank you again for reminding me. I will certainly open it up. Anyone, uh, would like to speak, uh, regarding this, uh, the sketch plan? I guess not, so, uh, let's move on. So, uh, Brian, Dave, thanks for, uh, coming in this evening. We're tying on anyway, you didn't come in. Uh, we saved you a trip, but, uh, certainly take into consideration, uh, what you heard this evening. Uh, take the time to read the ECB comments, uh, their minutes. Make sure you, uh, read in detail the ag committee report, which was, uh, just generated today. Make sure you have a chance to read that. Uh, refresh your memory as to what the, uh, requirements are of our special use permit. And, uh, I guess Eric, uh, if things move forward, we'd be looking at a subdivision, a site plan and a special use permit at some, some point down the line.
If I could, just real quick, I just wanted to thank the board and, uh, and, uh, the town for hosting us tonight and allowing us to present our application. It's very helpful to, uh, receive your comments and feedback. Obviously, you know, understanding as a result of this that, uh, this is a, a critical, um, entry point for the town and, and you mentioned several time, times that it's a, a gateway for the community, so, um, and that, uh, that the agricultural nature of the current use is very important. So, uh, we'll definitely take those aspects into consideration and, um, and, uh, look forward to, to working with you and hopefully, uh, finding a solution that, uh, that works for all of us. So thank you very much for your time and I appreciate, uh...
Okay, well said.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. Okay, folks. Uh, let's move on to, uh, a sketch plan submitted by, uh, Bergman in conjunction with Aura Power Solar, representing John Aiki, owner of property at twenty-eight ninety County Route ten, uh, requesting a sketch plan and review for a solar project. Uh, someone here representing the applicant?
Hi, uh, I'm here to represent Aura Power. My name is Caroline Rizzo.
Hello, Caroline.
Hello, how was everybody?
Good.
Uh, just wanted to give like a few statements about what Aura Power does as a firm and then, uh, go into a little detail about the proposed project that we've submitted for site, uh, sketch plan review to the town. Um, so if there's nothing, you know, before that, I'd like to get started.
Go ahead. For yours.
Thank you. My name is Caroline Rizzo and I am the head of US Development at Aura Power. Aura Power is a United Kingdom-based solar development firm. We have projects all over continental Europe, including Italy and Portugal. In addition, we are located in the UK, Ireland and Canada. Of our global projects, we have an active late-stage pipeline of utility-scale solar photovoltaic and energy storage projects, which totals three-point-six gigawatts of capacity. Of this capacity, one-point-six-six gigawatts have been secured at the grid level and one-point-one gigawatts have been granted planning permission. Uh, on a whole, our development teams work closely with local stakeholders and municipalities to ensure that our projects deliver environmental and community benefits. Um, so that's a little bit about Aura as a firm. Um, and I just wanna go into a little more detail about this particular project. So this project located at two-eight-nine-zero County Road ten in Canadegwa will be our first US project. What we have proposed is four megawatts AC located on an eighteen-acre size project. We have received in a completed Caesar study back in October and this shows that the project is indeed viable. We intend to connect and, uh, connect to an existing distributed generation line running along County Road ten provided by RG&E. Uh, we have submitted a, this conceptual site plan review to get the town's initial comments on this proposed project. These comments will help Aura and our engineering team at Bergman, who also represented Wildcat Renewable, uh, to complete and submit a thorough and robust special use permit application. Aura intends to carefully review the comments from the town and prepare a SUP application and site plan approval. And we intend to submit that for the February meeting, so we intend to submit that in early January. So that is, you know, kind of some comments on Aura and on this project and opening up to, you know, comments from somebody else, please.
Okay, thank you, Caroline.
Thank you.
Board members.
What kind of soils are there?
Funny you should ask. We have a report from the ag committee. And here it comes. Oops. Can everyone see that? The committee believes that the proposed solar farm is well-suited to this area of the town, being that there are two others in close proximity. The committee feels that there does not appear to be any direct loss of farmland associated with this project, nor would it have impact on any of the nearby farms. The committee is aware that this parcel is used to house a horse farm, but state that it's not been utilized for any farming purposes for a very long time. Uh, the motion was made by the ag committee that they recommend to the planning board that the proj- project does not cause a loss of agricultural land for the town of Canadegwa. So, so say the ag committee.
But I guess, Eric, can you pull up what kind of soils they are and just to be apples and apples with the last project? I mean, the ag committee is, is, is not a quasi-judicial committee, right? They are, they're, they offer recommendations, right?
That they do, yep. They are, they are agricultural arm experts as much as we have experts in the town.
I mean, certainly, they're, yeah, they're advisory in nature, but certainly there's been many, many comments through the environmental, uh, EAB that we have not taken such hard lines with.
I, I appreciate the point, but I also am not sure how often the code is kind of so clearly stating about like the loss of farmlandism, but...
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I don't wanna cause an issue. I just wanna know, like, I, I, I'm, I'm just trying to, if, if soils are the issue, then we really should look at the soils according to New York State Department of Ag or, or whatever that same metric that's used in, in everything in the town. I mean, I would never wanna show a bias towards one applicant versus the other. Obviously, I support solar systems in this particular situation. My main concerns are gonna be the corridor for wildlife as they were on the project just to the south, making sure that the fences are, are raised off of the ground, uh, four to six inches for small creatures to be able to access. Now we have this, we're looking at this picture right here, now we all, if that's gonna have to be fenced, which I assume it is, Caroline, you can... Now we all, if that's going to have to be fenced, which I assume it is Caroline, you can answer that for sure. Now we're looking at even more of an impediment as a corridor for wildlife to access the outlet from the east going over county road ten, just as I thought would happen in time. Not a big deal, we could plan around it and be proactive. So I'm just trying to be consistent as I always try to be for every application.
Yeah.
And Ryan, just to, you know, I did, you did, you know, ask me specifically, uh we do intend to fence this as required in the town code. But um as me and Dave Plant at Bergman have discussed, we do intend to use agriculturally sound uh fences. Um, you know, and we'll take as many recommendations and requests at the town level as possible to ensure that there's no additional um impact on the land that is unnecessary. So whatever, whatever, you know, that may be, whatever kind of fencing that is, if it's deer fencing, egg fencing, that is what we intend to use in this area.
If you need um the, what is it, the um, the detail for that fence that we use for the one to the south, just let me know and we'll try to find it over.
Yeah, that would be great. I, if that, if that is what the town is recommending at this time, I don't know if there's been improvements in technology since the one directly to the south has been installed, but you know, a similar model is not more um advanced would definitely be, you know, very applicable here.
Carolyn, Bob, I have two questions.
Yes, Bob.
Are you, are you consider, since you're so close to the road, are you considering any screening? Uh and also, what are those, is there like a building there, yellow with five or six dots on it? What is that? So those two question.
Um, so uh as per some preliminary comments that we received from the town, I believe we see, received them last week. Uh the main comments were regarding uh screening and stormwater drainage solutions and um with those comments, we have taken them in and made sure that they will be included in our full and thorough um special use permit application. So we do intend to have significant screening to um protect the view shed and make sure we maintain the agricultural uh look of the town of Canandaigua. We understand that that is a um you know, of something of great uh regard in the town and don't want to affect uh any sort of residential areas or, you know, any sort of view shedding issues. So we do intend to um to screen this um definitely sufficiently. And in regards to the yellow, I believe that was um overlaid by Bergman and it see, it is a switch guard, switchgear yard. Uh but I think that Dave Plant, uh he is one of the engineers working on this, he would have more uh more to say on what this actually represents.
Just a lowly planner, not an engineer, but uh uh Eric can appreciate that. Um so um that is the switchgear yard where the equipment's going to go, the pads for the inverters uh to uh transform the power from uh direct current to alternating current, which uh is the power on the R G N E lines along county route ten. And so um that's what that, that kind of area is uh is called out as. And as Caroline said, this will be provided in much greater detail along with the screening and the actual full site plan set that's submitted in January. Kind of wanted to get an idea from the board as far as type and spacing of of landscaping that the board prefers. You know, there, obviously to the south, there is no screening along county route ten for the existing solar farm. And um there's not a lot of screening uh at the Speedway uh for the Speedway, so we'll, we'll be glad to work with the town to to pick the right species um and locations.
Uh Dave, how tall is that switching thing? Is it a building or is it just the pedestals with uh like inverters on them and stuff?
The latter, exactly. Pedestals like three to three, they're like the green boxes that are found out in the front of the houses and and any of the subdivisions.
Thank you.
Dave, regarding the landscaping, uh yeah, with the recent approval of the uh uh storage facility to the south. We, we spent a lot of time working with that applicant and then he was very cooperative to uh include a a very aggressive uh landscaping plan along the frontage of county route ten. So in the combination of the storage sheds and the landscaping should all but uh uh screen the view from county route ten of the existing facility. So again, we would, we would look for, being that you're right out on county route ten, a very uh very active plan as far as landscaping. Uh my, my question is that it's a very simple one. The axis of your arrays are north to south where the axis of the existing array is east to west.
Yep, Chuck, I can.
Trying to catch a different sun?
No, um, technology, as Caroline mentioned, technology has improved since the last solar farm was done to the south. Uh these are movable tracker panels that um I think Eric showed the detail for with the last application. So they actually move and track the sun across the sky as it moves to catch more sunlight and be more efficient. So they need to be oriented north to south in order to move on an axis um to follow the sun. Uh whereas a a fixed tilt panel needs to to be oriented east to west um to maximize sun um access.
So in the morning, they'd be sort of facing toward county route ten and by evening, it'd be the other way around.
Correct, yep, they'd face west. Um and then um and at night, they would revert back to their, their original location so that they can meet the sun in the morning.
I've got to ask, is there no noise associated with that?
Not usually, no, no more than a, than a uh freezer, um in a, you know, a, a large freezer in your garage. And um they're set far, far enough back from the road and I think any residences where um there should not be any exceedances of any um of the sound uh ordinance items from the edge of the property line.
Do they all move at once or are they done by rows as far as their re- reposition?
All at once.
All at once. Oh, that's a happening to be out there when take the family on, watch it come back from the, the west to the east. Alrighty, uh obviously you're on a county highway. I think uh you'll have to talk to the folks, our friends at the County Public Works Department regarding the access. Uh I think you uh there is an existing driveway there if I remember, yep. So you're not uh planning on any additional driveways?
At this time, we are not um planning on any additional site uh cyber accesses.
What's going?
Go ahead.
I was just curious if there's any change to like the use of these buildings or what's going on there?
Uh you know, the, the landowner, Mr. Aiki and his wife have not indicated um what they would like to um do in regards to those. Um it's my understanding that they do not reside in these buildings. However, um you know, it is their, it's their, their land. We're not optioning that area, we're just optioning the areas with um the panels. So that is up to them and their discretion.
But it, it's all part of one lot, right?
It is one lot, we will not be dividing it.
Okay, so there'd be no need for a cross easement?
No.
To get, to, to get to your facility?
No.
Who maintains the fence line, clearing it and everything? Mowing?
I'm sorry?
Who mows the fence line? Who's going to take care of it? Will it be done?
Yeah, you mean like the, the growing vegetation within the fences?
Right.
So um I don't know at this time, you know, what Aura plans to do. I know that we have uh had preliminary discussions about potentially um having some wildlife um work on vegetation, you know, to have a more environmental, environmentally sound uh solution to that, but at this time, um you know, it could be, you know, it may be found that having someone hired to do that job may actually have more uh benefit rather than, you know, a more natural solution. So that's still up in the air, but we will definitely have our answer question before we before, before we appear in front of the board again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we, we always talk about the ground surface underneath the panels. What's your intent here Caroline? Did just leave it natural, so to speak? Then only high weeds?
Yes, I don't believe there's any impediments right now to uh what we intend to build on the land. I think that as of right now, um we just intend to maybe do a quick mow or something like that and, you know, begin construction whenever we do receive a, a permit uh granting.
Lance, uh, you have any comments on the stormwater management? I know we always talk about what is considered pervious and impervious uh regarding these facilities?
Yeah, so um D E C has made a, a ruling on the, on the, on the solar panels and how they're installed. So if they're on a pedestal or a fixture is on the ground, um that's considered impervious surface that would have to be calculated and an accountant for. Uh the type of solar that's being proposed and the kind that we typically see is this pole based where they, they're basically sticking a pole into the ground. D E C's basically said that because it's a raised fixture, all the vegetation is remaining underneath it, therefore it's not an increase of an impervious surface area. What they require them to treat is all the impervious surface area. So those are the concrete platforms, those are the roadways that get counted up and have to be addressed as part of the mitigation measures. What we look at as part of the review is the total disturbance area works in this part would be everything from the fence line in um including the roadways and that. So that would typically reside in over an acre, therefore the, the preparation of a SWIP and compliance of the town's requirements being in M S four agency and D E C requirements. But the area that they would have to provide water quality treatment would be for the impervious service area, which in this case would be per D E C standards, the roadway and, and, and the concrete pad areas.
Okay. David, have you thought about where, if and where you would put any type of stormwater management facility on the property?
No, no, we haven't yet. Um as, as Lance said, you know, any stormwater treatment for water quality will be minimal. Um given D E C's position on stormwater and solar. We need to get the, the site survey, topographic and boundary done on the property to be able to figure out how and where water flows and how we would need to treat anything if there's a swale system or a you know, I leave that up to my, my smarter engineer uh coworkers at Bergman to, to work on those calculations. But that will be included in the full site plan set and then typically, you know, we wait until, because the, the process to receive uh coverage under the stormwater general permit from D E C is usually so short, it's five to fifteen days. Um we wait until later in the process to submit that, but I don't know if Lance or Eric or if anybody has a preference as far as when you want because you're in M S four, the SWIP to be submitted if, if that really needs to be done upfront at the first submission or if that's something that we can take care of um afterwards, just in case anything changes with the site design during the planning board's review.
I, this is Lance within my B group, so you know, this is um a special use permit application and a process will be required to do a coordinated review under seeker. I, I understand what you're saying in terms of the, the document itself. Typically, the backend of the process would be adequate. However, all the stormwater calculations that, that are required um that you ultimately do uh the locations and design, those should all be part of your application submission at the beginning. But to reiterate to that, I, I agree. I think stormwater in the sense that we're all used to seeing with ponds, you're not going to see that with this type of application. It's going to be very minimal. Um infiltration is typically used. It's not to say that the board or the town couldn't have reasons to require additional mitigation measures to be provided. I'm just saying standard approach for this type of project, we typically see something very minimal.
Okay, uh the
This is, oh.
The service, uh real quick, this, well, I'm thinking of it, the service driveway that runs down long to the uh south of the arrays is, will that be gravel, stone?
Yeah, so it will be designed to D E C's pervious gravel roadway standard so that we still meet that um you know, limit the amount of pervious surface on the project site. So they have a standard detail for that pervious roadway. Um so that'll be used uh for this project most likely.
Thank you. Gary?
Thank you. Um I, I, I know my comments today are going to make me sound like I'm the guy that's totally against solar farms. And, and, but that's not really true. Um and, and I also really respect the, the rights of, of property owners and individuals to do pretty much what they want on their property. But having said all that, I guess my biggest concern w- with this is the proximity to the other solar farm. We, we already have a ten acre or so, I think, farm there and to the town. Um this is going to look like we have now a nearly thirty acre farm. Um and so I, I think that is going to be my biggest uh uh not dilemma, concern here is ju- is the screening, is to, is to make sure that it's, it's properly screened so that it doesn't just reflect, you know, nearly thirty acres now of uh of continuous solar farm uh in the, in the town of Canandaigua. So um, so that, that's going to be my uh, my biggest uh thing to get, to get through here on, on this particular site.
Yeah, and Gary, I definitely um see what you're saying and I, I understand that concern. However, I do want to reiterate that Aura Power i- intends to and will be screening this um sufficiently to prevent any sort of view set, view shed issues. And uh if that is the case, um if the view shed is proper, which we intend to have, then it, it will be, you know, separate from this southern parcel and therefore will not look like one contiguous um solar project. And I do want to just um also, Gary, I know that you had um questioned the economic benefit of these projects to the town um during the Wildcat Renewables uh review and I just want to point um you know, inform the town that we are in a few preliminary discussions with um a few businesses and other uh town um owned buildings uh to potentially uh do a power purchase agreement. These are preliminary and are not in any position to be discussed with any sort of detail. However, for the next site plan review, um or sorry, uh special unit, special use permit review come February, I think there will be more details and we'll be able to discuss that further. So we do believe that there will be significant economic development, economic benefit as well as environmental benefit to this project in the town of Canandaigua.
All right, good. Well, I appreciate it because, because I think that's kind of what I'm looking for is just different arrangements of how the power that is generated by these solar farms gets distributed and that we can find, you know, a better method than the one we're used to now, um which is simply we just sell it to R G E and then we have to rely on R G E to not just reap those profits, but to actually bring that back to the consumer.
I, I can share this detail that we did speak with the Ontario County Economic Development Agency and took some recommendations from them for um, for leads to pursue on that, that front. So we are, we are uh, you know, concerned not only with environmental but economic benefit for the town.
Appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
We should start our own electric utility, Gary, right here in the town of Canandaigua. How do we do that? Fair, Fairport has it.
I, I agree. I know, and I think it's a, that's, it is this, it's a bigger thing that we got to consider how to, how to do that. I mean, we've, if we take all the money that's going into these so- solar farms, we could probably put a, a, a solar array on everybody, every house in Canandaigua and uh we'd be energy inefficient or energy, energy, energy free.
They do it in other countries.
I know, so we, I just got to rethink, are we down, are we going down the right path? I mean, solar is great. I, I agree with that. It's just, do we have a different model that we can use to benefit everybody? That um is not only economically but environmentally, but also aesthetically pleasing.
Okay, Gary, I'll add too, just to Caroline's point that not necessarily this is what Aura or Wildcat are proposing for their projects, but generally with community solar, the power does go back on the grid, but then there are subscribers, citizens of the town that subscribe to the projects and, you know, they get a share in the, of ownership in the project and then because they've signed up for this ownership, you know, they typically, I, I'm, I'm a subscriber here in Farmington. You know, I get a ten percent discount on my bill every month from the electricity supplier, so that's the most direct um savings to the consumer. In addition to what Dr. Blazy mentioned earlier about just the overall environmental benefits of sourcing your power from hundred percent renewable sources.
Yeah, well, well, thank you. And then, and as I said, I'm coming across as I'm the guy against, against solar and I'm not. I understand the, the benefits. I just think we ought to re, kind of think about, are we doing it the right way? That's all. Thanks.
Okay, very good. Uh David. Okay, very good. Uh, David, Caroline, were, were we helpful in giving you some guidelines for, guidance for moving forward?
Definitely very helpful. And I do wanna just, um, end by saying thank you, um, to the entire board for, you know, looking over this project and, you know, accepting the review and, uh, giving us a space to hear these comments. We really appreciate it. Aura and I, I I speak, I think we're David and Burgman by saying we appreciate that as well.
Okay, and to supplement our discussion, make sure you, uh, look over the E C B comments on the application as well as the, uh, we, we did refer to the ag committee's, uh, comments. And, uh, reread the, the requirements under the S U P, the special use permit as to what your application shall entail. And, uh, you also heard Mr. Finch mention about the, uh, no tax exemption. So that's certainly something you have to consider moving forward. So all that being said, I will say good night to you folks.
Uh, can we see if there's any public comment on this one, if anybody wants to?
We'll, we'll try one more time. And thank you, Eric. I appreciate, I keep forgetting. Uh, anyone out there like to, uh, speak regarding this application?
Again, it appears not, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
But figures, the one time we didn't do it, that's when the guy wanted to, John wanted to speak up. So, all right, uh, let's, uh, move on to our last sketch plan. Which, uh, Mr. Marx Engineering, uh, representing, uh, Gina Falbo. Riodes owner property at forty seven sixty five Seneca Point Road. Um, they are, have a five lots conservation subdivision on seventy five acres. Excuse me, getting hoarse. Uh, Brennan, are you there?
I am here. Can you ever?
We can hear you.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Brennan, Michael, Anthony and Gina are both on the phone tonight. Also, the property owners and also Peter from our office on the other computer also. Um, so we have a seventy six acre lot on Seneca Point Road. That is bounded by Barnes Gully on the south, uh, Seneca Point on the west and then farmlands on the north and the east. Um, so the occasion here is for conservation subdivision, um, the concert, the conservation subdivision will be for five lots, two of which will be proposed house lots, one and two. Three, four will be existing houses. There's, there's already two houses, a lot here. So we separate thirty, three and four, they're existing houses for residential lots. And then lot five be a, um, large lot, which is gonna have agricultural lands, steep slope lands, the gully. Uh, also a proposed retreat area for, um, Eric has, Eric can explain it, but it'd be a public use, um, slash religious organization, not for profit. Uh, that will be, use this land to, uh, organize retreats and then have a, an array of cabins and a caretaker's lodge to, uh, to enjoy. Already been in discussions with the town, uh, Doug Finch and Eric, as well as the trust about the Barnes Gully on the south side of the property. It is a beautiful, uh, gully. It's, it's breathtaking, as Anthony would explain it. And, um, it would be a, it would be in our pan, we had to, to connect possible connection of trail system from, um, the Vista down to Ononda. Um, the owner of the property is really doesn't have just other than putting a couple houses on here, keeping a couple houses he's got, developing treat area. And then keeping the rest of the property pristine. Um, the method of doing that would be so, uh, an array of easements or two easements, maybe three. Uh, one would be conservation agricultural land easement over the farm at the east side of the property. A easement along the steep slopes, woodline along Barnes Gully for conservation easement. Um, no development, uh, basically forever while. And possibly a third would be a access easement. We're still discussing that with the town, figure out the best way to do that. So with that, I'm sure there'll be options. So don't forget the public comment.
Maybe I should go there first. Uh, but I won't. Uh, I'll save that, I'll save the best for last. So, uh, board members, uh, Brennan, you're talking a conservation subdivision. So that puts you into, uh, you know, uh, delineating all the, uh, constrained lands, uh, which I guess you'd have to do at some point. Uh, and then you would have to do an analysis. But it's, this, uh, you mentioned conservation easements would be, um, applied to the property in specific areas that I guess are mostly constrained land areas. What are you looking for, Eric?
I was looking to see, uh, what maps they have on here about like constrained land, see the steep slope map here. So um, there's a bit kind of where those two houses are proposed.
Hmm, oh yeah.
Yeah, of course, depending, you know, actual survey, this was just online, uh, and then the gully. The pond is called out as a wetland. Then of course the stream, but buffer is mostly gonna be contained in that gully anyways, no flood zones, historic features.
Ask a question, Chuck?
Yeah, I was guess, uh, I was gonna defer to you, Ryan. I figure you were loaded.
I guess when I look at this parcel from, uh, twenty thousand feet up into the air and I see Ononda Park and the lake and our forest protection area and the new hundred acre, uh, landscape uh, that we protected in perpetuity in a partnership between the town and uh, Finger Lakes Land Trust and Barnes Gully, uh, one of the most ecologically sensitive areas of our community, I would assume. Uh, and I, I look at a corridor, uh, for wildlife, for birds, uh, for, um, all, all the creatures that would benefit from it, including, uh, the human beings. How, I guess while we have Mr. Doug Finch on here, how, how can we get really crafty? In a, in a partnership that satisfies the neighbors, that satisfies our trail plans, our open space plans, our commitment to conserving Canada Lake. Um, with a, with a willing landowner here. This doesn't come by very often. If I, this, this is a willing landowner that's willing to partner with the town for a really cool, uh, project here. I guess if I could reach out to Eric and Doug Finch, like, how, how does that? What's that process look like? What are the potentials avenues for us to take here?
Eric, you want me to start here?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, if, if you don't mind, now, go ahead and talk a little bit here for about this. So that's actually, uh, why I was on the call here or on your call here tonight. In addition to seeing all your great faces, it's been a while and everything, but
Ah.
Um, you know, Eric has highlighted, uh, minus the lakeside portion of Ononda Park here. He's highlighted the, the yellow areas. These are the parcels, uh, that are, are basically in play here that we're talking about, minus the parcel, the, the applicant parcel. These other parcels are the parcels, um, from Ononda, McJanet Park to the left of the applicant park. The, uh, agreement is Ryan just said that we did with, uh, Finger Lakes Land Trust, including the access down to McJanet Park. So, um, I wanna thank, uh, Eric and Brennan and, uh, Mr. Rhodes. Uh, we had a great call, uh, last week where we explored some different things and, uh, I, I am trying to get, uh, creative if there is an interest in moving this forward on the part of all of the parties. Um, I think that there's an opportunity here to protect some of the farmland that's on this parcel, maybe through an agriculture conservation easement. I think there's an opportunity to protect the, um, the forested area through one conservation easement net. And then maybe a separate conservation easement in the area. Um, there, we have to have conversations though, there, there's a couple of different things going on here. There's, we have to have conversation with not only the applicant, but also the neighboring landowners because if everybody is not in agreement and we're not able to work together to find some solution, then, then you know, whether or not it works, you know, I, I don't know. Uh, it's, in my opinion, I need more time to work with all the parties, uh, to get creative from, 'cause what you're really talking about is conservation easement acquisition by the town of Canada. I've also met with Finger Lakes Land Trust. I know that they have walked this property. Um, I think I can speak for them based on the conversation that I had with Andy Zep. They don't really have an interest in really holding the easement per se, uh, for this, for this. Uh, but of course, we have been doing a lot with conservation easements over the last few years. Um, there's also a secondary, I think, question that, uh, had come up to me. Uh, with some of the neighboring landowner conversations and, and really trying to understand more of the intended use for the parcel, not only from a trail and public access, but also this, uh, concept of a religious retreat. I think there's some questions that people would like to understand that better. And, uh, what the, the long-term future of the operations of the property might look like. So I think that, to, to go back and, and kind of summarize it, Ryan, there's a lot of opportunity here, as you said. Uh, but there's still a lot of moving parts that we kinda gotta figure out before we really try to solidify everything. And so, and, and I really, I would, I'd rather go about this in finding solutions that everybody can get on board with so that we're not trying to go down the road of trying to put a square peg in a round pole. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you guys unless you have specific questions about it.
Um, yeah, thanks, Doug. And I just had to want to put in here, uh, opportunity for Tony, just give us an understanding. Give us some breakdown on the retreat and the, what his plans are there. Tony?
Tony, you're muted, I think.
You wanna unmute him, Ken, Eric?
I can ask him to.
Mute, okay, I got it. Can you hear me?
There you go. Yep.
Hello, everyone. I'm glad to be here. What, is there a specific question you'd like to ask me or?
Just gonna give down a general, yeah.
Excuse me, may I ask who's speaking, please? Chuck, could you ask who's speaking?
It's the property owner, Anthony Rades.
Yeah, I'm, I'm Gina's husband. Gina's on the line as well.
Okay, sorry, folks stepped out for a sec. Uh, thank you, Doug.
We were, uh, just about to get a general operations overview from Anthony about the, uh, the retreat area.
Perhaps I can just read a statement that I, that I prepared and edited. Um, that might help a little bit if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay.
Oh.
He's pulling it up on a.
Well, you can read it too, right? I think you have.
Brennan says, uh-oh, we're here.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we hear.
Can you, can you hear me? All right, well, for some reason, when I click off the screen, can you hear me still? Okay, you can hear me. So when I, okay, so what I said was, my wife Gina and I are very grateful to be in front of the board to share our vision. Uh, thank you for allowing us to submit further details to better explain our requested uses. We are excited about the possibilities and hope Canada would become a helping partner, partner, so to speak. Nearly five years ago, my wife and I began searching for land to create this vision. It took almost a year looking and we found this parcel. Four years ago, we registered a, a startup, five oh one C three nonprofit called Women for Life. It is likely this organization will manage the proposed activities below. We are requesting approval for a conservation subdivision with two existing homes, two new home sites that could be future home sites for my wife and I, as well as my youngest son, and protecting the remaining lands for conservation and small seasonal holistic campground. We propose and seek permission to build up to ten seasonal cabins, each approximately three hundred square feet. These will be equal friendly solar powered seasonal cabins. In addition to the cabins, we are proposed, we propose an area set aside for the placement of five large TPs in a very private rear corner of the land. We also intend to build a recreational building, which will also serve as an office and caretaker living quarters. The structure will have male and female showers, facilities for campers' use, including a full kitchen. Each of the buildings will have obviously the necessary septic system needed to accommodate its forecasted occupants. Far, the farthest rear sloping acreage will be used for organic farming and the proposed one and a half to two acre pond will serve as agricultural irrigation pond as well as a recreation pond. We have leased this to a local farmer and we're very concerned and disappointed to find out the chemicals they use that certainly find their way into our beautiful lake. Also that the feed, the food grown is for animal feed only, and I've learned that cattle farming is extremely harmful to the environment. We'd not, rather not participate in this form of farming on our land any further. The camp is for, is, is primarily intended for holistic activities such as retreats for meditation, yoga, drum circles, silent retreat, spiritual reconnection for those struggling with their lives, regional educational activities. And possibly small weddings and birthdays and family activities. We intend to use the existing agriculture road for access and modify it to meet the safe highway standards necessary. This road will go directly to a main parking area where there will be a small parking lot. No road registered motorized vehicles, other than farming and emergency vehicles will go beyond this point. From this parking lot, guests will then walk to their seasonal cabin or other sanctuary trails, et cetera. In the nearly one mile trail system, we plan, uh, having trail sign. Now, now folks, this trail system pretty much already exists. With only very minor modifications for safety, it already exists. And for the most part, until you get to the rear back corner, it's a very, very safe trail system all the way around. It's the back corner where at some point, if we move this further, the town, if they obtain the, the property in between ours, we'll have to figure out a way to safely navigate that six hundred feet. Uh, but I see it's definitely doable. I've spent a few years on my property, uh, and more since these, these, these conversations with, with Eric Cooper and the Finger Lakes Land Trust have started. I tried to really become much more clear of how easy or what the potentials are. Um, and what I wrote here is in a nearly one mile trail system, we've had, uh, we, we plan on trail signage, maps, benches. Since the trail system has some incredible appendages and plateaus that overlook the meandering gully in multiple areas. My wife and I hope this is giving you a better idea of our intended plans. We don't anticipate beginning this, uh, until twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, with a target opening of summer twenty twenty three, if possible, or longer, depending on funding. This is approximately six hundred thousand dollar endeavor and my wife and I have funded all ourselves up to this point. And hope to get outside participation with our five oh one C in the few, and five oh one C three in the future. My wife Gina and I asked members of the board to take into careful consideration our complete devotion to the preservation and stewardship, stewardship of this one of a kind property in our community. It means a great deal to be in this, in a position to work with the Finger Lakes Trust or the town to develop a beautiful community trail system for generations in the future to enjoy. My wife and I are approaching fifty years old and I can't see a more worthwhile future than to one day be the caretakers of this planned space. I really appreciate you letting me read this. Thank you.
Well done.
Hey, Anthony, uh, I'm gonna send you an email real quick, but would you mind sending the, uh, that statement over, uh, so we can include it in the minutes? You're muted again.
Yes, sir. Yes, I will.
Okay, well, let's, uh, keep things moving here. Uh, that's certainly quite a vision you have, Anthony and Gina, and I certainly appreciate your bringing it to the town. May I ask, are you the, uh, owners of record of the property or are you equitable owners?
We are the owners of the property.
Okay, very good. Okay. That's, that is quite an investment.
Hey, Chuck.
We, we, we have a very small mortgage on it in comparison to the property's value, in my opinion.
Good, good. Uh, somebody had, uh, queried me.
Yeah, this, this is Gary. I, I was just gonna ask, uh, you know, we talked about the, the proposed location of the two house lots. I guess it's lots, uh, is that one and two? Yeah, one and two, um, being on a, a steep slope in that area. Um, and I, I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious if, if, if that's gonna prevent, um, houses from, houses from being built in that area? Is this kinda like? if that's gonna prevent, um, houses from, houses from being built in that area? Is this kind of like a all or nothing?
Can I?
Is there other options?
Can I speak to this?
Let Gary finish first, Anthony. Are you, are you, are you done?
I thought he was finished. Yes, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, you know, is it, i- i- if houses can't be built on that, or if the steep slopes are preventing from houses, are there other options? Or, um, if, if portions of this kind of total plan, uh, can't be executed, um, you know, where do, where do we go? I'm just kind of wondering, is this a kind of a all or nothing thing or? Where, where do you stand with respect to the various different pieces of this entire kind of project? Over.
Anthony, your response?
Yes, uh, and that's why it's kind of difficult because we're, we're looking at the property from afar, but I can assure you that the slope that you're seeing is, is not even near where the proposed home site is. What it is, it's kind of like, I'll have about 100 feet, maybe 150 feet, and then it goes down slope. So, really I plan like a walkout basement, but I'm at least, I would say at least 75 feet from where it goes down into a sloped area. So, it's not quite how, how it looks in the picture at all. In fact, the flattest part of the property is the proposed home site. You just can't see it with, with your maps. It is the flat, flattest part of the home site of, of the property, the entire property. The flattest part is the prop, the part that has those two new parcels put on that map. It's extremely flat part of the property.
Okay. Yeah, well, we'll, we'll see. I'm sure we'll see that when a, a full site plan comes in, but I just wanted to kind of get your, if you've thought about that. And then also the, the other question I guess I'll raise, and then Eric, you can jump in is, is just the, the issue of septic with so many little outbuildings and houses and things like that. Have you kind of considered what type of wastewater, you know, treatment plants you're gonna have to have to support this whole project? Over.
Yeah, so, uh, answer to that is, is not yet. Um, but we will meet DOH standards and requirements for the cabins and for the proposed houses.
And, um, back to the steep slope things, when the subdivision plan is brought to us, it'll have to be, you know, surveyed with the accurate data for the elevations. Um, if the, if there is land that's over 15%, I believe the code requires that it be conserved. I believe it also requires that it be, uh, not on a building lot. Um, it can be maintained in private ownership, that's not an issue. Uh, but it can't be contained within a building lot. It may be something to try to work into the plans and consider for you guys, Brennan and Anthony.
Are those two, are those two lots in the woods too?
Yeah.
Uh, it's not terribly thick, but there are.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Uh, yes, Anthony.
Yeah, that's a very quite, that would be a very easy revision because all's we have to do is move the, the rear lot lines to the left about, uh, you know, cause ready, basically I took, I took the lot line of those two proposed lots right to the farm field in the back. Alls I gotta do is literally cut those in half and move the left, the left lot line to the left and the, and the right lot line to the left. And then I'm not, then, then those proposed building lots won't even be on the sloped area of the property. They will be on just the flat area of the property.
Yeah, uh, Eric, I could just ask you to embellish on that a little bit. And so steep slopes can't be a part of a building lot. That would be a, uh, can you explain that a little bit?
In conservation subdivision, um, it lists the various, uh, features that are considered constrained lands. Um, I'll try to pull up the code real quick. But slopes over 15% are considered constrained. Uh, constrained lands have to be included as, uh, open space and conserve. And open space can't be included in, or as a portion of a building lot.
Okay, I, I think I do actually read that. So we'll, we'll take a good hard look at that. Uh, that's, like Anthony said, it would be an easy adjustment on the lot lines to make sure that's taken care of. So.
Okay, other comments from the board before I go to the public? Uh, is it correct, Eric, the cabins, I guess, would require special use permit? If and when that occur? Okay. So that's certainly a consideration. Uh, we talked about the conservation subdivision analysis, uh, delaying the constrained lands. Anybody else from the board? If not, I'm going to open it up to anybody, uh, from the general public who would like to.
Would, would it be considered a campground, Chuck?
No, um, a campground is like if they were, you know, renting it to the public for profit. Um, you know, like a KOA, I guess, or something like that. Uh, a public use is defined, I'll try to bring that up real quick.
Cause I know we do allow campgrounds in the area like as a special use permit, but you know, there's gotta be like 10 acres or something like that.
They're, they theoretically, they could apply for a campground, although I don't think that's really what they.
No, we wanted to go with the, we go with the public use. Um, I forget how you exactly said the words when we were talking, Eric. I think it's a non-for-profit, a religious organization type thing.
So, uh, to provide charitable, so it's, uh, operations, activities conducted by, in this case, legally established not-for-profit to provide charitable, medical, educational, recreational, spiritual, or similar benefits and services to the public. Um, I think that we might need a little bit more information on what the proposed use is, but from what I gather right now, that's probably what it would fit under. Um, and then this is the chapter of the special use permit code that it regulates it.
Which would require a statement of operations, so that we get into the, the details as to what's, uh, how it's gonna be used.
Okay. Uh, one thing we did, one thing we did want to talk, I, I wanted to just mention to you guys, and obviously this is, I don't expect the answer. Uh, there, I know that there is a parks and rec fee associated with some lots. If there is a, a large, uh, benefit to the town for such trail assistance that, that ever does, as it is executed or whatnot, maybe the planning board could waive the parks and rec fees for the, the new lots.
Okay, we would, uh, take that under consideration, bro. Sure. Okay, again, I'm going out to the public. Anyone out there like to, uh, speak?
Can you hear me?
Yes, give us your name and, and number, please. Uh, name and address.
5740 Barnes Road, Kathy and Bill Bernatovich. Can you hear us?
Sure.
Chuck, could you please repeat a little bit slower? I didn't get it.
Kathy, would you, uh, re- repeat your name and address?
Yeah, 5740 Barnes Road.
I'm gonna try to pull it up here too for you, John.
Yeah, there you go. That's exactly what I was looking for.
It's the gap, yeah. The gap property, yeah.
Right, right.
You have the floor. You, you have the floor, Kathy.
Okay, we are the property owners, as you see with the, with the balloon there, with, uh, with highlighted. Um, and Anthony, I think your name was, that was a very good insight as to what you're proposing. Um, we do, we obviously have a, a private land here that's coming up to what your, your land is. Um, first concern is, uh, well, let's go with the questions first. Is this a year-round retreat? Or how does that look as far as people being in the cabins or?
That question's being directed, that question's being directed to me and I would ask Anthony for an answer.
Um, well, it was my understanding originally that it would be a seven-month, um, open, open, open space. Um, and we are all allowed to use the facilities, the cabins from April through November or May through November. And obviously with the work that we do, since it's so, um, uh, it's got, uh, you know, there's, uh, spiritual sense to it. We don't want to have any major construction going on on the property, uh, during those, those, those peak times. So, shutting down all winter long and, and, and our plan, take the time to just improve the property, to maintain the property. Uh, because if you're, you know, so if you're trying to have a silent retreat, you, you don't want to hear any chains, chainsaws or, you know, or hammers or electronic, you know, or electric drills and things like that. So it was always our intention for the last couple of years to keep this very seasonal.
Okay, so that, you're, you're describing the cabins now as being seasonal, but they're also as a structure in the middle of the property. Um, are, are you including that within the cabin?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just a caretaker facility. Obviously the caretaker is probably gonna be a year-round, um, someone that's gonna live there year-round because it's a property that we're gonna maintain year-round. And, uh, but other than that, uh, there'd be no, I don't plan any functions there outside of the seven months we're allowed. Um, and, and Eric, you know, I, I, I don't know if we've wandered away from the, the proposed camping idea now, or if we found, I, I don't know, have we found ourselves in other territory because you said that, uh, you know, I'm a little confused now. But yeah, that, our intention before hearing Eric say that was always to keep this very seasonal. With the exception of the residents that are, that, the residential lots that are there, that will be year-round.
Yeah, I don't think anything that I said should preclude or necessitate it being year-round. You can.
Okay, is, uh, okay, so, okay, thank you. Also, a couple more here, questions for you. Um, as far as, uh, is there gonna be a limit to the amount of people, uh, that are on the property at one time, or? I, I guess our general view of this is that it almost sounds like you're describing another Ononda Park with the cabins and the trails and the, uh, so.
Well, well, you, in, in a, in a sense, yes, um, but, um, you know, i- if, if cabins were rented to the public or a group, like a, a group wanted to rent, uh, the space, this is a park where, you know, or a place where you're not bringing alcohol, you're not bringing your own food. It, it's a complete holistic experience. So the food that we grow will be the food that you eat. It's not gonna be for everybody. It, it's, it's a, it's a much more private, even though for legal purposes, but it's much more private use for, for, for other spiritual groups or groups of that nature to come in. And when you asked about size-wise, well, 10 cabins, maybe two people per cabin, so 20 to 25 people, I guess, would be a peak, but we would anticipate, you know, between 15 and 20 people could be on the property at a certain time in addition to the staff.
Okay, okay.
And it's, you know, it's a lot of space. There's a lot of space on the property and I, and I understand your concerns completely.
Yeah, so, yeah, okay, so, okay, this, this was a great conversation. I, I know we're leaving the, the town board out of it, I think, but, um, I, I, with that being said, um, you know, Bill's and our concerns are number one noise level. Um, as far as noise, uh, traffic, additional traffic, um, both, uh, on the road and foot traffic because we, uh, but, because you're abutting to our private property, the, you know, uh, people go, trying to get to the park through our land, um, is a concern of ours. Uh, so, I don't know how that's going to be addressed. Uh, because, you know, there, the gully is there and our, our land is between the park and what you're proposing. Uh, we right now have a problem with people in the park coming onto our land already walking. We can be out on our own land and see strange people walking on our trails. Um, that's very much a concern of ours.
And that's a concern of.
Okay, go ahead.
That's also a concern of ours, Kathy. We've had hunters come out of the woods on our private property, but I can tell you that, um, for, say, say the town doesn't establish a continuance from their sys, their trail to ours, say that does not happen. The rear of our property, there is not a trail that goes from our property toward your property. There is a steep cliff there and we don't propose any, doing any mountain climbing on our property. So the only way for any of our guests to go onto your property would be for them to do something pretty dangerous. So there is a, there is a pretty well, there is a pretty well-defined obstacle, um, that now, can, can it happen? Yes. Will we do everything in our power to not let that happen? Absolutely. I, I, you know, I, I don't wanna, I, 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 we cherish what we have and I know you cherish what you have. Um, and, you know, I mean, that's what I can say about that. The only way they can really walk from, from our trail where our last trail is, the only way that they can actually walk from that trail to your property is if they're walking in the actual ravine itself. Because there is no trail, uh, the last probably, I would say two or 300 feet from, from, from where the last part of our trail is to your property, there is no, there is no trail.
Okay.
And we have had people, many people walk up and down the gully too. Um,
Yeah, we had to.
That's a fairo fare for them is the gully. Uh, so our, our concern is, you know, we don't want to create more foot traffic, um, into our land. Um, uh, is our main concern here with this whole, uh, idea, proposal. Um, I think you've answered it as far as the amount of people at one time, uh, doesn't seem like that'd be creating too much traffic on the road. Uh, you know, we live in a very quiet area and it'd be nice to, you know, keep it that way as far as the traffic goes. Um.
Okay, uh, folks, in the interest of time, I'm gonna, maybe Anthony and Kathy and Bill, you guys can get together sometime and, um.
Okay, can I just make one more comment up really quick? The teepee in the corner, that teepee, it looks like in the corner, that is sitting really, really super close to our property line. I don't know if that, you have to meet a setback requirement? Um, just food for thought. Okay?
Okay, very good.
All right, great. No, I appreciate your time and Anthony, good talking to you too.
You're right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you Kathy and Bill. Uh, anyone else, uh, like to talk regarding the sketch? Okay. Uh, already, well. Oh, I hear. Speak up.
Yo, can you hear, John DeGrandi? Can you hear you a little better now?
Yeah, uh, name and address, sir.
Uh, John DeGrandi, 4925 Seneca Point. I'm about two houses up from Barnes Road.
Yeah, John, what do you have to say?
Hey, um, nothing bad. Uh, the previous caller asked most of the questions I wanted, just, uh, in 10 words or less, I, I, as I understand that the name of the religion was Lumen for life, that I don't know if I have that right. Um, can you describe that? Is it Jewish? Is it Muslim? Is it Christian? Uh, not that it's crucial, but I'm just curious.
Sir, I have no idea what you're talking about. I apologize. Uh, I, can you, can you repeat?
I think it was.
Yeah, as you were, as you, I'm sorry, as you were describing the, uh, religious retreat, I thought I heard the words Lumen for life, a holistic campground.
Oh, no, yeah, it's win, win, win-win for life. And that, that, that concept comes from, when we help each other, we both win. Win-win for life. It's not a religious, it's not a religious, it's not a religious organization, sir.
Okay. Okay, and you're gonna.
But.
It sounds like your objective is try to help out some people in need. Uh, you're gonna have some, and I sound like you said you're gonna have drug circles? Did I hear that right?
Drum circles, sir. Drum, drum.
Oh, drum, not drug, drum, drum circles.
Yes, drum circles.
Yoga, meditation and so forth. Okay.
Yeah, yes.
All right. All right, um, just another question. I have heard land movers, uh, when they back up, they make sort of a beeping noise. And I was just curious, is that work going on at your, at your lot or is that somewhere else? I, I just curious, has, has work been already been going on there?
Well, we did, we did install an ag road in the last couple of months, but there is a homeowner that just purchased a home directly across the street from you and I see a big dump truck up there and some other equipment across the ravine for me.
No, it's not him. I'm, I'm familiar with, it's not him. I'm familiar with his work. It's, it's not, it's not that. It's, it's somewhere else, but okay.
There's been no work done on our property for the last probably three weeks. That work was completed about three weeks ago or a month ago.
Okay, um, you did mention you're gonna have some showers and so forth. I was just wondering, where are you gonna get all the water? You know, are you gonna use well water or you have other ways? Where are you gonna get all the water?
Uh, well water, sir. That's where we get our property water right now.
Okay, all right, just, just curious.
Where, I, I don't know where else we could get it. If there was town water, we would, we would tap into that, but there's no town water even close to us.
Exactly, exactly. And I was just curious, you know, how, how are you gonna do it? And I guess you, you're in the same boat I am. We go with the well. Okay.
Okay, John, uh, did we answer your questions?
Yeah, yeah, you did. Uh, I may have more, but, uh, these, these are helpful. Thank you for your.
Well, again, this is a sketch plan review tonight and the applicant has, uh, yet to go, uh, into the formal application process, which he will do in the future and, uh, we'll have plenty of time to scrutinize and review these plans moving forward.
Chuck, this is Kathy again. I'm Barnes Road. Quick question to Anthony. Is there a website on this win-win? Chuck, this is Kathy again on Barnes Road. Quick question to Anthony. Is there a website on this win-win that we can review? Do you have a web site or something we can, uh, get familiar with the organization?
Yes, I do. I don't know if it's up right now. Oh, can you, can you hear me? I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually checked on it this week because we, we developed a nonprofit four years ago and we haven't quite, um, we, we haven't quite really done anything with it because, I mean, we had other things to attend to. Uh, and I didn't see it actually operational. What I can do is include, uh, that information in the letter for the minutes for this, um, discussion. And you could, it's probably public record. And if, if that's, if that's, if that website is actually up and running, yeah, definitely review it. It, it gives a real good description on win-win, win-win for life. I, you know, and I hope you're, I hope you're really, really pleased with what that is.
Okay, all right. We will check it out. Thank you.
Okay, Kathy, John, thank you. Uh, and I will move on to anyone else who would like to speak. Okay, I'm not hearing anyone. Uh, anybody else from the board have any comments? Uh, guidance, recommendations to give Anthony and Gina regarding their application?
I guess, I, I guess, you know, just piggybacking off of what Doug said, if we can somehow get together, e- even with that neighbor that just had the parcel in between, I hope she's still on the line. Like, is there some way that we can get these neighbors together to have good solutions? I really encourage them to reach out to Doug Finch and, and let's, let's move on this, uh, for the protection of the Barnes Gully.
Um, yes, we're on the line and yeah, we're definitely open to conversation. Of course, you know, uh, Bill and I would definitely be, so. And I think Doug has my information.
Kathy? Could I have Doug's information? Does he have a cell phone, I, a, a, uh, address that could contact him in if I had any questions? Email address?
If you don't, if, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, just for a quick second, and, and maybe Eric, you can just share my contact information. Kathy, I've actually been trying to reach out to you and I just texted you too, just so you know. Um, but, um, yeah, so, uh, my information is actually right through the town website. Eric will share that right there. So that's all there. Feel free to contact me and I would love to, uh, you know, work with all of you, so.
Okay, great, yes. And I will give you my email. I'm seeing that now. Okay, all right. All right, sounds good for us. Thank you.
All right, folks, thank you.
Check the chat. I just included, uh, Doug's email in that chat. But, um, if you need anything, please feel free to give the town hall's, uh, mainline number a call and we'll, we'll get you all the contact information you need. Five-eight-five-three-nine-four-one-one-two-zero.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, and thank you all for your time. We appreciate it.
Okay, we're here to help. Very good.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Thanks, folks. Thanks for, uh, signing in. Uh, all right, well, uh, Anthony, I, I guess, uh, we can wrap this thing up for tonight. Uh, hopefully we've given you some guidance. We certainly wish you the best of luck with this project. It's certainly, uh, you and Brennan have a, a project that certainly I think is, is well worth the town's effort to work with you. And we will continue to do so and, uh, um, it sounds like obviously the town board's gotta get involved. I, I think our park and rec committee, uh, should be tuned in on this thing. I think, uh, Doug, you had said the Finger Lakes Land Trust has already been, uh, spoken to, so, uh, that, that's good. And, uh, I guess as far as the planning board is concerned, uh, we would look forward to your, uh, doing the Conservation Subdivision analysis, uh, tying down the, uh, any constrained lands on the property. So we know, uh, what we're working with is in terms of, uh, of topography and, and that, that sort of information that we need uh, moving forward in our review. And with that, uh, if no one has anything else on this application, I will draw it to conclusion.
Can I say something quickly, very quickly?
Sure, Anthony.
Um, uh, since I got some of the important people on this call. So when we built that, uh, ag road, uh, I'd asked Chris Jensen if it was okay and he allowed me to do that. So it was never built with the intention of being the road for this pro, this project. So, uh, I should be able to complete that road, which is simply a road to get me to the back of the property. Um, because we do not wanna let this farmer farm our property and put these, put these chemicals in our soil any longer. So we would still like to proceed with a soil disturbance and build our pond because that pond is how we're gonna irrigate our, our farming that we're gonna do. We're gonna do the farming whether we allow, what you guys, whether we work this out or not, we are gonna do our farming on our property. We just don't wanna let the farmer who's doing it now continue to pollute our land that goes right into the watershed.
Yeah, that's fine. You might need a site development permit or a soil erosion permit for the pond. Not really a big deal, uh, real quick. But you can work through our office on that stuff. Certainly we're not gonna stop farming your land.
And who just said that, sir?
That's Eric.
Eric, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Chuck, thank you.
Okay, uh, good night, folks. And, uh, moving on with the agenda. Uh, let's get back to the more mundane of being the approval of the minutes, although to John Robotello, it's far from mundane. Great job on the, uh, minutes of the twenty-fourth. Uh, can I have a motion to, uh, accept them as submitted?
Yeah, I will make a motion, Gary, to, uh, accept the minutes of, uh, November twenty-fourth.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Second?
Second.
Okay, uh, looking at the agenda, we have no referrals from town board, uh. Oh. Thank you. Anybody opposed? Okay, uh, trying to keep this meeting moving, sorry, guys. Referrals to town board, there are none. Recommendations, uh, that the Z B A's looking for from us, there are none. Nothing, no, uh, comments from the code enforcement officer. We have no money to give out tonight as far as letter credits and binary leases. And, uh, that sort of brings us to nearly the end of the meeting. Uh, I would like to echo what has been said, Karen, regarding your participation in this board. Thank you very much for your service. Um, we certainly wish you and Mark the best of luck in your, your future endeavors. And, uh, stop in or check in or sign in or come virtual every once in a while and see how we're doing.
I intend to. Thank you very much.
Good luck. And, uh, not a total goodbye, I don't think. Eric, uh, I, is Doug still on the line?
No, he left immediately after we finished it.
Oh, he knew we were gonna talk about you. All right. I'd ask, you know, I guess we need a little bit of help from you as to what, how things will go in the future and once we get into January, uh, regarding activities that you've been doing for us. Um, I, I, I guess you're gonna still be around to some degree, right?
You're talking to me?
No, no, I'm talking to Eric now.
Eric, yeah.
Eric.
Karen's like, no, I'm not gonna be around.
I can't tell.
Karen, do you wanna be a town planner? Apply for the job, yeah. Uh, Eric, how, how are we gonna, uh, work logistically regarding your moving forward?
Yeah, so, I'll, I'll still be on, um, probably part-time thirty hours a week or whatever. Um, as we transition, I, I don't have anything lined up yet in Buffalo, so, um, to the point that I do, I'll probably be trying to help out here. Um, it's okay that I work remote according to Doug. So, um, they are looking for a planner, uh, putting out the applications and all that stuff. We interviewed two people last week. I think we wanna just, um, see if there's anybody else out interested in the position. But as we transition to whoever is new here, whoever new is here, I'll be helping out. Um, so I expect to still come to the board meetings. Uh, expect to still be helping out with applications, although, uh, some of the duties we probably transfer over to Chris.
You'll, uh, continue to have your email address at the town hall?
Yep.
Okay, so that's how we get ahold of you. Uh, all right, well, again, good luck to you. Hopefully you, uh, find something out west that's to your liking.
We do not call Buffalo out west, Chuck. It is west.
That's the wild west out there.
That's where, that's where Ryan comes from.
That's where the, the Bills roam, the Buffalo Bills. All righty, uh, anybody have anything else for the good of the group? If not, uh, we will be meeting next year. And I think it's January, the, uh.
Twelfth.
Twelfth, is it? Okay, it'll be our first meeting. And looking at.
Amanda for volunteering to step up to the full-time position on the board.
Hey.
Thank you.
I didn't feel bad 'cause I knew you'd do a fabulous job.
Thank you, Karen. We're gonna miss you tons.
And all that twelve hours of training you had will come in handy.
Better. I will use it my next job.
Okay, all righty. Uh, looking at the agenda for the twelfth, it's really not much right now. Do, do you see anything else in the horizon, Eric?
Tough to say. Deadline is tomorrow and, you know, some of those applications might go to that meeting on the twelfth.
Okay, and, uh, we have P R C next Monday, right?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
We, I, I guess, do we, you typically the first or second meeting or something in January? We have to do a, we kinda do an administrative type thing or do, we have to do that again coming up?
Yeah, good reminder. We go, uh, we reappoint, uh, all our consultants and our, uh, third, you know, people that are John and Lance and Chris. And we also go through our rules and regulations, rules of procedure.
Right.
So, uh.
Maybe, yeah, John, maybe John or Eric, something can send that again just to make sure we all have them and can see. I, I usually don't have any changes, but be good to look at them again.
I have one minor suggested change. It's just about when the deadline dates are. It's kinda more for a development office thing, but, um, it is stated in the rules of procedure, but I'll send that out.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
And Eric, that change is because that's currently what we're doing now?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, thank you.
That was something you suggested, right Lance? Wasn't it something that?
Yeah, Eric and I worked together to, to kinda come up with a plan that we thought might be easier for the development office to complete their review and then be prepared for the P R C meetings. And I think so far from my standpoint, it seemed to be successful. Um, but obviously that's, that's something for the planning board to consider as part of their operations as well.
Okay, yeah, I agree.
Very welcome because we're being short-staffed and very busy this year, surprisingly. It's been tough to keep up in that extra couple of days has made a difference.
And I, I guess we'll continue virtually as long as we can. Uh, I just, I see January probably being the worst month of the last ten months. So, uh, stay home, stay safe and, uh, we'll, uh, continue to, uh, to work virtually. Uh, I'm sorry, tonight got a, you know, a little unruly because we had a lot of people on the line. So it, uh, this is the first time I've really had a little bit of a challenge as far as trying to run the meeting. So it, uh, it worked out all right though. So we're good, we're good. And, uh, we'll keep going this way and, uh, till we're told we can't. All righty, okay, uh, cue Ryan.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Happy New Year. We'll see you guys.
Happy holidays.
Take a motion to adjourn this meeting at nine oh three P M on December eighth, two thousand twenty. The last day for Karen Blazey and Eric Cooper. And we'd like to thank them for all their goodness, so.
And we'd love to take you out for a beer, Karen, but.
It'll happen. It'll happen.
Eventually, eventually we'll get together. All right, Merry Christmas, everyone.
Yep, Merry Christmas, guys.
Be safe.